You tell me when you're ready.
Jeez.
Jumping the gun a little?
Kind of itchy.
Call to order, the county board meeting for October 15th. We'll start with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flying of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Beth, roll call.
Commissioner Schlangen.
Here.
Mr. Heinem.
Here.
Commissioner Gepinski.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, approve the agenda. Has anybody got any adds, Monty?
Yes, sir. So, right before nine oh five, County Administrator, if we could please add the emergency management Paramount Planning Agreement, please.
Okay.
And then next is, so, right before the rinky noon and retainer on County Administrator, if we could please add the St. Cloud HRA ARPA Agreement. The St. Cloud HRA ARPA Agreement. And then, Mr. Chair, following that, then, there's three memorandums of agreement on the class comp study. The first should be ABSME, and then items, the second and third would both be the Teamsters 320 MOAs. So, three MOAs on the class and comp maintenance program implementation. And that's it.
Okay.
Who for approval, excuse me?
I would like to add just a quick discussion on the airport authority. Monty, where do you think we should add that? Should we add that at the end of Chris Byrd's?
How about, that's a great idea, right before meeting updates.
Yep.
Airport.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval of the amendment. I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. County board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. The county board observes Robert's rules of orders for its meetings, so please obtain the board chair consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment or on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn off your cell phones or turn them vibrate. Thank you. Okay. All right, no public or open forum consent agenda as items one through... One through six.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, there's already an item on item five, amended contract with Paramount. Are we to remove that and...
Please, thank, yeah, we did not have the actual contract itself for inclusion in your packet, and we thought since we have it today, we should explain it.
Okay.
So, it's, yeah, so, it's, that's a good point. It should really not be voted on as part of the consent agenda. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval of the consent agenda, items one through four and item six.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve items one through four and six. Any communication or dialogue? If not, I'll call a question. All in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. With that, we'll move right into the emergency management.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. About a month ago, I brought a contract to you to work with Paramount Planning to do five continuity of operations tabletop exercises for every department in Benton County. An amendment to that contract, once that was sent back to the contractor, he pointed out that their insurance policy does not match what our contract had stated. So, Michelle graciously did an amendment to the contract, and I'm bringing that back to you this morning for approval. It does state some lower liability limits as well. They don't have cyber security insurance coverage.
Okay. Monty, will our MCIT insurance cover that portion?
Well, what I know Michelle always hopes to achieve is dollar amounts that are equal to the governmental tort limits.
Yep.
So, when you have a gap, that does create some potential exposure. That would be covered by the county and not MCIT.
Okay.
And, you know, this happens from time to time. One of the problems is about 12 years ago, the legislature increased the tort caps. And they went from one million to 1.5, and we've been told oftentimes this insurance is sold in million-dollar increments, and that second million is extremely expensive. So, sometimes it's a challenge for vendors to obtain that extra million. So, we've seen this many times, and I guess it's a matter for the board to decide, is, you know, you've got cost benefit risk, risk reward. Is it, is it okay to accept some risk there, right?
Yeah. In the future, maybe what we could do is have them provide a cost, what that cost would be to go to that, so we could see if it's $10,000 and there's a lot of risk, it might be worth adding to their contract to add that, you know.
That's a good point, yeah, in the future, I suppose, asking the vendor, okay, if you give us the amount that we need, what's that going to cost? Because they're going to pass along.
Yeah, exactly. Then we have the opportunity to say yes or no.
But, yeah, this has come up many times over the past decade.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chair, Kristen, you have any personal experience with this, these people?
I do. I've worked with him quite a bit. He's one of, about one, emergency management vendors in the state of Minnesota. So, my experience with him has always been good. He also has a team of people that works for him. He works for Region Four, the emergency management region that's made up of 18 counties, as our regional contractor as well to do exercises for us. Actually, in the future, probably next summer sometime, I'll be bringing back another proposed contract to work with him to do an emergency operations center exercise for us, a little bit larger scale. So, my experience with him has always been good. I know as well, he's looking into cyber security coverage because we are not the only county that's asked for it. Doesn't mean he's going to get it. He definitely doesn't have it now, but it's something he is digging into.
And did you see Region Four is 18 other counties? Okay. All right, move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other questions?
And I can just add, is the cyber coverage is in, MCAT now is recommending that you try to obtain that from vendors. It's sort of a new thing, and I could see a lot of vendors like, what is this? We're not really used to this at this point.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve. I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Monty.
I believe we're ready for Northland Securities' update, and it's up on the screen for you. Did I say security?
You did.
I meant Northland Reliability. I'm sorry.
That's okay. My name is, good morning.
Getting some more bonds we don't know about?
Our bond counsel, that's right. Our bond counsel.
My name is Brian Hunker, and I work for Great River Energy as a transmission permitting project manager. I'm here to provide an update on the Northland Reliability Project. I believe this is my third time here, possibly. It seems like we come back about every six months or so to give you an update. So, again, this project is proposed by Great River Energy and Minnesota Power. It is a new high voltage transmission line that extends... There we go. That extends from the Iron Range Substation outside of Grand Rapids down to the Kiuna Series Compensation Station, which is outside of Kiuna. That's going to be new as a part of this project. To the Benton County Substation right here on the southern side of Benton County, that will be expanded. And then down to the Big Oaks Substation. Big Oaks Substation is going to be built as a part of Excel Energy's Alexandria to Big Oaks project. So, this is a double circuit 345 kilovolt transmission line, and it's planned to be adjacent to existing transmission for roughly 85% of the route, and it's about 180 miles long. So, the project was first approved by MISO, which stands for Mid-Continent Independent System Operator, and they're our grid operator for the, actually, the central portion of the US. We're in the upper Midwest, so there's a series of 19 projects that were proposed here in tranche one. Our project is highlighted in blue, and the other projects are shown down in orange. So, as you can see, the projects extend from North Dakota to Michigan, down into Iowa and Kansas. So, specifically, this project enhances the reliability of the grid. It'll enable different types of generation to be carried on the grid, as well as providing resilience during weather events, and have the flexibility to carry the different generation sources. Can think of the project as two segments. So, segment one is shown in orange. That extends from Iron Range down to Benton County, and that's going to be the new transmission component that's built adjacent to existing transmission, as well as expanding the Iron Range Substation, expanding Benton County, and building a new series compensation station outside of Kiuna. Second segment is shown in green, and that is replacing two existing transmission lines. Both of those lines are roughly 20 miles long. They both extend from the Benton County Substation. One goes to the existing Circle Substation where nothing will change, except for a couple interconnections. And the second one will be down to the Big Oaks Substation, and that will be new. So, back in August, we filed an application with the Public Utilities Commission, and that was for our combined certificate of need and a route permit. The Department of Commerce held scoping meetings in October of 2023, and that was to collect feedback from the public and agencies regarding potential route or alignment alternatives that would be studied within an environmental assessment. That environmental assessment was drafted by the Department of Commerce. It was published in June of 2024. In July, the, actually, I should say, the state within that time period hired an administrative law judge, or an assigned administrative law judge. That judge held hearings in July of 2024. In September of '24, we filed responses to public comments, and we filed two proposed routes within that time period. They're both shown on the maps in front of you, and I'll get into them in the presentation here. In November, we anticipate a report from the administrative law judge on the record, so that means all of the route proposals, route alternatives, and that will be provided to the Public Utilities Commission. We anticipate a decision from the commission in the later part of December or January of 2025. For more information, I do have the docket numbers down here at the bottom of the slide and a link to the e-Docket site. So, in July, the ALJ held hearings across the project from Grand Rapids all the way down to Sauk Rapids. And these are some of the common comments we've heard. Specifically, in Benton County, there were a series of alternatives, route alternatives, that are called the J-alternatives. I'll show you a picture of those in a bit here. We heard some concerns regarding those. We heard concerns and comments regarding following the existing transmission line, concerns for houses, property values, and along with easement values as well. That was fairly common across the entire corridor. Obviously, down here, we heard a little bit more regarding center pivot irrigation systems, farming practices than perhaps we did up in Grand Rapids, where we heard more about timber value and clearing of timber. This shows the route that we proposed in our route permit application. So, the orange line is the new transmission that's adjacent to the existing transmission. During scoping, the J-alternatives were proposed, and they're shown in the pink, I'm sorry, the purple dashed lines that are west of our existing transmission. They essentially follow 55th Avenue. The reason those were proposed was to move the proposed route off of the Elk River kind of snakes through our transmission line, to kind of move it off of the Elk River area. In September, we filed two routes. One is called the modified proposed route. The second is called the co-location maximization route. So, the modified proposed route follows our existing transmission, except you can kind of see here on the right-hand portion of the slide, it's, it sort of bows around Golden Spike Road, where there's a few large oxbows of the Elk River that goes in there, and then it maximizes the distance between the homes at that location. Otherwise, for the most part, it would be built west of the existing transmission line, adjacent to it. The co-location maximization route, this one's a little, little harder to explain, but you can see in the aerial photo, at the bottom of it, there's a blue line that comes in from the east. That is, is an existing 230 kilovolt transmission line. At the top of the picture, you see a green line that also comes in from the east. That is an existing 69 KV transmission line. So, in between the green line at the north, the blue line at the bottom, there's a 230 KV transmission line and a 69 KV transmission line. We would propose to, for that stretch that's shown here, it's roughly about five, six miles, we would propose to double circuit those two lines, so build them on a common structure. Place our new NRP transmission line adjacent to that. So, what that does is that allows us to co-locate or share rights of way of the existing transmission line with the current one, and thereby reducing the amount of new right-of-way that we would be needing. So, both of these are going to be studied by the administrative law judge and published in their report. We can't, so roughly where the transmission line comes in, so the blue one on the south side, we can't double circuit it all the way into the Benton County sub because there, there are, within that area, there are two existing 230 lines that are already double circuited. So, we'd have to have the double circuit 230 with the 69, and then NRP through there. So, last year, we started field surveys. So, this included cultural resource reviews, wetland delineations, rare plant habitats. And we were able to collect most of that data here between May and October of 2024. Should there be any changes within our route, we will need to go back out in 2025 and re-survey those, those areas. Soil borrowings are planned to begin in Segment Two, so the two transmission line replacements. They'll probably begin here in the November timeframe. So, south of the Benton County sub, you'll see folks that are out staking their proposed structure locations, staking the soil borrowings locations, and then soil borrowings will begin at those proposed locations. We also have started the real estate process as a part of that, and that starts out with the right of entry agreement. So, that's getting a landowner to be informed about the surveys that are going to happen, whether they're soil borrowings, wetland delineations, cultural resources, and then we obtain an agreement for them to enter their property. That would be followed by easements, and then construction and restoration. So, easements will be in 2024, '26. Construction in Segment Two will begin in 2025, and we'll build in a south-to-north fashion. And then we've got in service in late '29, early '20, '30. The bottom of this slide shows a graphic of what the proposed transmission line will look like. So, in Segment One, again, north of Benton County, we have the proposed, or the existing H-frames there, and then we have the proposed monopole structure. So, that'd be a steel monopole with the two circuits on either side of it, and that's going to be on a concrete pier foundation. South of the Benton County sub, the two transmission lines will be removed, and they'll be replaced with that double circuit monopole. So, as I mentioned, we have begun the land rights process, and... Oh, I feel like I, oh, no, I didn't skip. Okay, sorry about that. So, we have begun the land rights process. The land rights, their landowners were contacted regarding a right of entry. And also in Benton County, while it's not shown on here, but we are going through the option process. So, many landowners have been presented with an option. And should they exercise that option, that will be transitioned into an easement once the final route is selected. Once the structures are staked, we have conversations with the landowner about where those structures are located. And then, we'll be able, and then we, obviously, we can address any other questions that they may have. So, that's box three here, and then box four is construction and restoration of that transmission line. So, currently, we are going through engineering design of the transmission line of the substation expansions. We are concluding the state PUC permitting process. Again, we expect that route the later part of this year, early part of '25. At that time, we'll begin ancillary permitting with the DNR, the DNR Corps of Engineers with Wetland Impacts, as well as the Board of Water Soil Resources. Soil borrowings are going to begin here in Segment Two, and then we anticipate construction in 2025. Again, those boring locations will be staked for landowners' knowledge. So, as we continue through this process, we do maintain our project website, and that's got an interactive Google Earth-type interface of our route. We do have our modified proposed route on there, as well as the co-location maximization route, as well as the scoping alternatives that were proposed. So, right now, the map looks really busy, but that's kind of the phase that we're at in the routing of this project. We've got our hotline up. We do anticipate sending out newsletters and postcards informing people of when the route was selected. We also have land agents that are out there. So, all the landowners that have been contacted are assigned an agent, and should they have any questions, encourage them to connect with that person. And then we are also continuing with presentations to county boards. If township associations want a meeting, we'd be happy to meet with them as well. And lastly, this is our project website. We do have the email address and hotline up there. So, that concludes the presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Questions?
For the record, how big of a project is this in dollars?
In dollars? It's going to be slightly over a billion.
Wow.
Yeah, it's quite the investment.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the update. Monty, culture team.
Okay. So, members of the culture team are here, and I'll just turn it over to you all. You got a plan? Okay.
Thank you. John first.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. Briefly, or before I get started, I had several members of the culture team that wanted me to extend our gratitude to the board for the adoption of the dental plan for 2025. As all of you are aware, that was one of the major themes that came out of the culture team benefits survey, and so that, that was a big hit with employees. So, again, just wanted to express our gratitude for the adoption of that dental plan. It's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Today, I'm just going to give you a very brief overview of the culture team. As you know, the county saw a need, and the board was willing to help us as employees identify and work on areas where we could improve the culture at Benton County. We met with Andy from Employee Strategies and had three meetings where we identified areas of need for improvement at the county, and we developed three subcommittees where we'll further focus on areas where we believe we can improve the culture at Benton County. Those three areas identified were improving benefits at the county, improving the employee and employee management relationship, and improving the training onboarding process. The goal of those subcommittees is to further explore ideas where we can improve the culture and benefits at Benton County, but we, as employees, will be doing the comparables, the research ourselves, so we can narrow that focus down. We don't want to bring a blanket of issues to the county board and just throw something out there and see what sticks. So, we're planning on doing the research ourselves, seeing what's working with other organizations out there. How are those organizations, whether public or private sector, improving that training and onboarding process? How are they improving the employee management relationship, or what benefits improvements have they done that they believe have helped improve recruitment and retention of employees? So, I'm the chairman of the benefits committee. We also have the chairman for the two other subcommittees here. They'll be talking to you a little bit about their subcommittees. Once we've narrowed some of the focus down for those subcommittees, we plan on further exploring a health insurance plan, which would be looking at, instead of just single or family coverage, seeing how feasible is it for the county to offer an employee plus one health insurance plan, a deferred compensation match, and a benefits education representative. So, we know to improve the culture at the county. We just can't ask for things that cost money. You have an obligation to residents. But how can we improve the culture without costing the county anything? One of the items that came out of the surveys is sometimes just the lack of knowledge on the part of employees of what benefits we actually have out there. When new employees are hired by the county, or sometimes existing employees might not have all the knowledge out there, new employees who are hired might have a lot of information coming at them. They might not follow up and, oh, tell me more about that deferred compensation match. So, our goal with like a benefits education representative position would be a volunteer position, and how they could work with HR to further expand the knowledge of newer existing employees and what benefits are out there. So, those are some of the ideas that we have and that we'll be further exploring. Do you have any questions before I turn it over to Katie and Michelle?
No. I know the insurance came up yesterday at the, at the District Five meeting, just about the different kinds of, or different levels of insurance.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you.
Morning.
I'm Katie Dusing. This is Michelle Recco. We're both at the Sheriff's Office. We are representing the relationships subcommittee of the culture team, and it's quite broad. So, we, we have started with, with trying to get together with Commissioner Gepinski's, or Commissioners Gepinski and Heinem, and I think that's next week. So, we appreciate that a lot. Our relationships committee isn't just between employees and board, but it would also be between employees of different divisions in, in the county, so we could all understand what our roles are and how we're all interconnected. We just want a full, a full, broad picture of, and transparency between everybody, and everyone's on the same page with how things are run and how things work, and what things need to be improved on, and what is, what's going well. Being that it's such a broad subcommittee, what questions do you have that we could address?
I think we'll learn a little bit more next week.
Right.
From the meeting.
And then that's when we'll have questions.
Yeah, that's...
Which we'll address with you guys after.
Right.
Subcommittee, right?
Yeah. So, that's, I mean, that's kind of it in a nutshell, but we appreciate that you guys are open to this, and we'll keep plugging along and going from there.
Well, we appreciate everybody on this panel because it means a lot to us. I mean, you've seen, we did act on the dental and stuff like that, so it's not going on deaf ears, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, that's...
And Mr. Chair, appreciate the update even today.
Yeah.
Kickoff start that we can get together and talk, so that's good.
Thank you. Yeah, it's mutual. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I'm kind of short, so I want to make sure if I can hear me.
That's fine. That moves down.
Do I need to adjust it? Okay.
There we go.
So, I'm Leah. The subcommittee that I'm here for is the training and onboarding. We were initially going to be, it was kind of like employer retention over, you know, like the turnover rate, but that was way too broad, and we realized we, you know, a lot of it was benefits or relationships, so we were like, this is too broad, so we narrowed it down. Kind of a common theme, and just talking amongst people in different departments, is they don't feel like they were trained properly. They were kind of thrown into the position, you know, different things. So, we want to kind of, obviously, this would be very close working with you guys and lady, because some of the things that we're going to be asking for, we cannot achieve without your help. Kind of in a nutshell, we want to try and get these training curriculums implemented, and some departments may have them. They're in a back closet somewhere, nobody knows. Some may be utilizing them. So, one of the things, you know, we're going to be asking of you is kind of if we need some of these management teams from different departments on board, they don't currently have something, that's where you guys come in to kind of help give that push to maybe, you know, further that. So...
Yeah, we're definitely on board with this.
Exactly.
Questions from the board?
Anything? Okay, well, as we have more stuff and kind of, we maybe want to do little subsurveys, department, you know, individual to each department and find out, hey, you know, where do you feel your training is? Do you have something? So, we kind of have a ground to start from, because if they have it, it may be a matter of pulling it off the shelf, dusting it off, and getting it ready for being used, and then maybe a policy coming out saying, this is what you do, because you may use it and he may not, and it's not fair to the people that are coming in to the ones that aren't being offered the same resources.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question, and I realize you're going to be starting to meet with these Commissioners next week. Do you, how often do you see yourself with an update with the board? I mean, that's not in stone yet, I understand that, but I guess my encouragement is I'd like to hear some updates, not just from them, but from your group.
Quarterly? And I mean, if y'all would like updates, you know, more frequently, this is an open communication. It's just not us asking of you, because we need your feedback as well, because this is, you know, we're going to be working very closely together, you know?
And I realize you two will be bringing updates back to the board at board meetings, but it's nice to hear.
I think hearing it from them is...
I think, you're right, it means more contacts coming from them than two board members.
And I wanted to say, this touches on their subject, but one thing that as a board y'all may not be aware of, a lot of the employees are kind of intimidated or afraid to come to the board, you know? So, I mean, y'all may or may not be aware of that, and that's kind of where they want to touch on really building the relationship and starting with the board, so that people that are watching and listening can know that you guys are approachable, and that's what you're here for, you know? And maybe we can kind of mend the bridge, and people will start voicing their opinions, and they won't just leave when they have a problem. They'll try and find a solution, so...
That's a, that's a great point, and I, the employee engagements that we do, or the meetings that we do, the forums, we actually, we listen to a lot of that, and we talk about it and stuff like that. The only thing difference between us and you guys is we put in $50, you know? And to be honest, I mean, it could be anybody up here.
Sure.
And stuff, and I think the whole board is really approachable, and we want to be a part of your guys' team, so we thank you for including the board.
And that's what we want people to see, you know? And kind of like Sean said, you're, you know, the things are not going unseen. The things that have been presented, I've been a part of the culture thing since before we were a team, with the initial surveys, you know, the group meetings and stuff before we actually formed our team, and being that I've been here from ground zero to where we're at, a lot of the things, pretty much everything that was addressed from day one has come to light, and you guys have, you know, made adjustments and fixed the things that have been brought to you. So, if the people, if there's anybody watching, you know, I want them to know you guys are listening, so...
Not speaking for the whole board, but we made a real commitment to be approachable, and we're going to keep on that.
Yes.
My opinion, we're going to keep that.
Yeah.
Well, it's appreciated, you know?
Absolutely.
Thank you for taking the time to come in today.
Thanks for, thanks for your old team. All right. Monty.
The Monty Show.
The Monty Show.
Back to Northland Securities.
Damn.
I believe the next item is appointing an interim Human Service Director. Of course, as you know, our Human Service Director resigned effective October 4th, and in interim, we certainly need the guidance of a director in that position. So, at this point, Mr. Chair, I recommend that you appoint Sandy Schoburg as our interim Human Service Director with compensation adjusted to the director pay grade. And I should mention that Sandy previously served that position, and we did make that pay adjustment during that period of time.
Mr. Chair, so she's been in this position, just not having the title for almost a year old. I know our subcommittee will be meeting shortly. We need to get this matter and take care of it and address it.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we're going to attempt to organize a meeting this week of our selection committee for some discussion about next steps.
Yep. I'll make a motion. Oh, go ahead.
No, I'll make a motion.
Oh, you make them.
You can second it, Mr. Chair.
That's fine.
For the record, Mr. Chair, the recommendation is that appointment be effective retro back to October 7th. That was that first Monday after our person departed.
I'll make the motion to appoint Sandy Schoburg Steinbach as interim Human Service Director effective October 7th, 2024, with compensation adjustment to the HS Director's pay grade.
I'll second that. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any questions for Monty? Or Sandy, she's here as well.
She'll probably, she'll probably say it's about time.
I don't have any questions.
Not putting words in your mouth, Sandy.
Been through this route before.
Yep. All right. Nothing needed for questions, we'll call a question. All in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thanks, Sandy.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you've done so far.
Yep. Absolutely. Mr. Chair, the next, I believe, is you have in your packet a letter inviting Benton County to join the Minnesota Rural Counties. The letter is from the Chair, Luke Johnson, Pipestone County Commissioner and Chair of the MRC. It describes also the due structure for membership, and a couple board members wanted this on your agenda, so I'll certainly turn it over to you all for a discussion on this group.
Okay. Well, I called Monty to have it put on. We talked about this in the past, and I think we were kind of holding out because Stearns County wasn't a member, and there was a gap between, you know, some of the western counties and Stearns County, and now Stearns has joined, along with a lot of other counties. They've, they've taken a new management. They got a really good lobbyist person, and I think they've picked up nine or 10 counties in the last year. Some counties that were, I know Olmsted County joined. I know that Ottertail County is looking at it. They haven't been joined yet. At first, I thought, well, we're kind of in MICA, and, you know, it's different than that, but there's counties to the east of us that are members too, I believe, so I think that we can do it on a two-year trial or something to see how it works. If we don't think we get the benefits out of it, would be my, my suggestion. I don't know.
Mr. Chair, so that is my question. What is, you know, Commissioner Pop, or whoever, what is the benefit of joining this? I mean, for somebody from, you know, his district is all city.
Right.
What is the benefit?
You know, they deal with more rural issues. They won't, they're not going to take on a lot of the issues that happen within the larger cities, and sometimes those issues get pushed, you know, to the side, or our people that we have through AMC or lobbyists don't, don't deal with them as much as what they will.
There's a map of who's in green, I guess that would be the members.
Mm-hmm. From my, from my standpoint, I think at the legislature, a lot of these counties in green don't get the proper representation anyway. They kind of get thrown to the side, so I look at it as $2,900, is if they get one thing in the next five years, it's good, we've made our money back.
Well, and there's a good partnership there with them and AMC also. And they're going to hold their board meeting at AMC.
Yeah. But, you know, six, eight years ago, when they had their rural county deal at AMC, there was, you know, there was a handful of people that actually attended, and now their rooms ain't big enough. There's so many people that attend, so... We looked at it, you know, I think former Commissioner Peschel was there a couple of times, and we looked at it in the past, but, you know, when there's a gap, it's kind of hard. Sometimes you wonder, do you going to get service like you should? But, and I, I believe that Stearns County did a two-year trial, too.
Mr. Chair, so what I'm trying to understand is, this is the gap that's going to be filled of what AMC cannot do for us?
Yes, yeah. You know, AMC has Environment, Natural Resources and some of that stuff that deals with ag, but they don't have anything that's just really rural.
You know, after attending their conference that they had at, they were at the Fall Conference meeting, you know, it was really pinpointed into rural issues, not, you know, downtown Minneapolis issues, if you will. So, and, and the map kind of reflects that. You know, I was encouraged to see that Stearns had joined. That's last year, I believe, within the last year.
I guess, Mr. Chair, I guess I need to come to a meeting to have a better understanding then, you know? I'm not opposed to this. Don't get me wrong. I'm just trying to understand, you know?
Well, Mr. Chair, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are invited to join for the '24 session yet.
I've seen that, yeah.
Which we could come to the annual meeting down at...
And that'll be at the conference.
Yes, at the conference, and get a taste of what it is they do. I mean, we missed the one in October. I believe there was one just a week or so ago.
Yeah, it was in Elex, I believe.
So, maybe a good opportunity to stop in, see what they're about, and...
Right.
Question, will they, is there a chance that they could address kind of what you brought up at the District Five meeting about the ditches?
Oh, I think that's something that they would entertain.
That, that's worth it right there.
And thank you, Mr. Chair, because I was going to, that was my next comment, you know? Is this going to assist and help us with the ditches?
Plus, it's not only one lobbyist, I believe there's three or four on staff.
I don't know. I know their, their new person they hired, like their CEO or whatever, her, she's got lobby experience and connections in the legislature.
Well, and it's like a lot of some of these others, it's, we sit on multiple different committees with a lot of these Commissioners, so...
And we get one voting delegate, I believe.
Right. Mr. Chair, you know, I, definitely not opposed to this, but I do believe, you know, they're looking for a regular and then an alternate to sit on these boards. I think it would be better, I'm just throwing this out for the future, is to have the alternate, somebody that's from a city area commissioner.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so that, or myself, or the new commissioner that's going to sit over here, but somebody that is from the city area that doesn't understand this rural stuff that they're trying to help us with, just to get a better understanding, that's all. That's just my opinion, sorry. I'm not sorry, but my opinion.
Yep.
Nope.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
And part of the AMC is the stronger together and the advocating for everybody to join in to help you out, too.
Mm-hmm. This doesn't have anything to do with AMC, though.
No, nothing at all. This is, this is an add-on.
Yeah. This is its own separate...
They call them affiliates.
They're, they're, yeah, they, they work together, but they're separate.
They actually have a seat on the board of AMC, though.
Oh, do they?
Yes. Luke Johnson's been, he's been... He's been on that board since, that happened maybe three years ago, that they give AMC, or rural counties a seat on the AMC board. So, they get update, you know, AMC Board of Directors get updates every month. They have a meeting from rural counties.
Do we want to, does anybody have any more questions, or do you want to make a motion?
I'll move for approval, two-year trial with MRC.
I'll second.
Okay. We got a motion and a second by Commissioner Slungin to approve this two-year membership trial with, was it ARC?
MRC.
MRC. If there's any other questions, if not, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, then probably your next step would be to appoint your primary representative and an alternate to this group. So, who would be your primary and then alternate representatives?
Mr. Chair, the primary should be one of the two gentlemen sitting down to the north of me.
You know, I would, I would recommend that we appoint Commissioner Johnson, because I got a little bit of say yet on that through my Environment and Natural Resources Committee.
Oh, so you got two voices.
Plus, with that, I have a feeling somebody's going to be sitting on the one watershed, one plant sartell.
Oh, yeah.
I smell that coming.
More likely.
More than likely.
Okay.
So, you making, going to...
I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to put Commissioner Johnson as a primary to this.
And an alternate?
Do you want to?
We haven't discussed the alternate yet.
Would you like to be the alternate?
I would like to be the alternate, just to learn a little bit more for the first year.
I'll make a motion, Commissioner Hein is the alternate.
Got it.
Okay, any otherbody want to throw their hats in the ring for this? All right, we got a motion for Commissioner Johnson to be the primary, and Commissioner Hein to be the secondary or alternate. If you have another question, I'll call, call the question.
Anybody, any county board member can go any, even like the administrators sit on their, their meetings when they have them at the conferences.
Sure. Yeah, it looks like the next meeting is at the AMC annual conference. It's the Sunday before.
Yeah, just only one, you get one vote.
Six to eight.
Yeah, Sunday evening before, yeah.
I got to believe the ditches is going to be a big thing in this, so, thanks for doing that, you guys. All right, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
All righty.
ARPA agreement.
Yeah, some ARPA agreements. So, this topic was discussed at the September 23rd Committee of the Hall, and the first one is the amended agreement with the City of Rice. The City of Rice told us that their bids for their well came in quite a bit higher than expected, like about $700,000, I think, total for the well, the new city well, and the board reached consensus to provide an additional $100,000 to the City of Rice for its well project. The City Council has approved the attached amendment on September 23rd. That was quick, and so that's, that is there for your consideration, Mr. Chair. The total obligation would be now $400,000 to the City of Rice.
I'll move that, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Ed, thanks for bringing this back.
Yeah, they, well, they contacted me if they had any.
Yep.
I'm just, Mr. Chair, I'm just glad we can help all the cities in the county.
And I don't think, from the way their lots are selling, that they're going to have it done any too fast.
Yeah. Good for them.
Well, that was the point.
Yep. Gift that keeps giving. All right, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
All right. Next is the City of Fuller.
City of Foley.
Fuller.
What was that?
I, I'm not sure what that was. Actually, back in two thousand twenty-two, the board reached, actually was a, um, a resolution to dedicate a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the City of Foley. Help them ta, bring fiber to their city facilities. Uh, the city is telling me that they, they think that a better use of these resources. Is for the water sewer infrastructure to serve new residential lots. Uh, so this amendment would basically take that one seventy-five. And move it over to the water sewer category. Uh, the city council did approve that agreement. You see that on, on October first, uh, the council approved that and the, and the mayor has signed. So that would provide then a total, um, obligation to the City of Foley of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Again, for water sewer infrastructure to serve residential lots.
Move for approval, Mister Chair.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Uh, once again, thank you, Commissioner Johnson, for working with Foley on this.
This is another good example of what Commissioner Gepinski and I did with the City of Stock Rapids, so this will definitely help the City of Foley.
Yep. Okay. I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Alrighty.
Saint Cloud.
Last ARPA agreement is the one with the City of Saint Cloud HRA to provide a hundred thousand dollars of resources to assist with improvements. To two, uh, low-income apartment complexes. Uh, that would be Riverside and Eastwood. They described the need for new roofs, uh, heating, cooling systems and so on, uh, to improve those two apartment complexes. That are in Benton County. So the city, excuse me, the HRA has approved this agreement and has signed it, and it's here for your consideration.
So moved.
I'll second. All in, does anybody got any questions?
No, I think it's a good faith agreement, if anything, you know, I'm not real fond of doing a parking lot and a roof. But, um, I think in good faith, we, we move forward with this.
We, we have, Mister Chair, we have a lot of clients and everything that would service over there too.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I agree to some extent, but at the end of the day, it's all about helping.
Yeah. With that, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
So, so Mister Chair, the last ARPA agreement that is not on your agenda today is to the City of Stock Rapids. And I sent them the amendment, I believe it's on the twenty-third, so they're taking a look at that. And that, uh, provides pretty much then, once that is done, virtually every cent of our, our ARPA dollars will be obligated. So I'll make sure and follow up with the city and make sure that's on your agenda quite soon.
Okay.
Let's see, I believe the next thing is you have three memorandums of agreement with our various bargaining units. To implement the class and comp maintenance program. So just a bit of, of background, Mister Chair. It's a well-established labor law, uh, concept that whenever you do a class comp study, you've got to negotiate its implementation. So that's why you have these MOAs in front of you. The class and comp maintenance program, year one. Uh, affected six of our eight collective bargaining units. So I've been able to receive three of those six. Two groups have asked to meet. Those meetings will happen in November. The final one, I heard back just recently that they are reviewing the MOA, so hopefully we'll have that one soon. Uh, but you've got three here in front of you. The first one, Mister Chair, is AFSMI. And, uh, basically each MOA is, is virtually the same, other than having unique provisions for positions. That are affected in those collective bargains. For example, with AFSMI, it just simply creates some senior positions. The case aide, the public health nurse and registered nurse, you can see those positions listed. And it says that promotions to senior will follow the county personnel policies. So that's the, that is the first one, Mister Chair, is the AFSMI MOA.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other questions? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Next, Mister Chair, is Teamsters Three Twenty, representing licensed supervisors in the sheriff's office. You can see under this MOA. You've actually got some reclassifications. You have the investigative lieutenant going up a grade, the patrol captain also. Actually, actually he's going up two grades and then the patrol sergeant going up one grade. And following past practice, this says that, um, step placement will be at whatever step. Is an increase over that person's, uh, January first, uh, step level. So again, that's following consistent past practice with how we've done class comp studies in the past. This visit, this particular MOA does not have any seniors recommended. It's just reclassifications. So that's there for your consideration too, Mister Chair.
Move for approval, Mister Chair. Second.
Yeah, we got a motion and a second. Any other questions? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And the final one, Mister Chair, is the Teamsters Clerical, uh, unit. That has employees scattered throughout the county and. And, uh, various, all of our departments. And in this one, we've actually got both. We have reclassifications. You have the HR administrative specialist going up a couple of grades. You also have the wetland and solid waste program manager going up from grade eight to eleven. I think we've discussed that, you know, given the board. Hopefully, a lot more flexibility, uh, in recruiting that, for that position. This also then creates a senior counterpart. Again, the, the notion there is additional flexibility, recognizing. Uh, the, uh, technical nature of that position, um, comparative wages in the private sector and so on. So this also again has the vision of a senior position.
Move for approval, Mister Chair.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other questions? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Alrighty, I think we're wrapping up with the rinky, the, the rinky retainer, we'll call it. So Mister Chair, Kathy was not able to be here this morning to discuss this with you. And, um, my recommendation is, uh, I know Kathy would like to, to see. Uh, some agreement as to how this agreement's going to work on a day-to-day basis. In other words, an issue comes up. Who's going to make the contact with rinky? How's that going to be coordinated? I think those are her interests and concerns. What I suggested to her is perhaps a couple of board members and Chris, I certainly couldn't as well, could meet with Kathy. And try and work out a, a, a good informal agreement as to how this will work operationally kind of day-to-day. Uh, so again, not, not, um, in a position to ask you to approve this today pending having that discussion.
Mister Chair, I was just going to say, maybe in the sake of doing two different steps here, how about we'll table this agreement to a future board meeting, make a motion to that.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to table the agreement. I'm, I'm in favor of that as well. I think.
I agree.
She needs to be here and, and we need to get.
Yeah, she's in a, a big trial going on, yeah.
So we'll call the question on tabling. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Um, yeah, I, I think i- i- rather than kicking that can down the road. We, a couple board members should meet with her and get this figured out. And Chris, yeah.
Mister Chair, and this will be only pertain to ditch items.
Yes, exactly. I know Commissioner Johnson and myself have met with Monty and her in the past.
You know, one thing that comes to mind, Mister Chair, I guess it's, it's, uh, maybe goes without saying, but I, I, I wanted to just make sure you clarify that. That this is a simple retainer, two hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
For limited, limited consultation, that if it gets a lot more in-depth. Uh, then you might go to a billed at hourly rate arrangement.
Exactly.
Uh, so, but, uh, initially, it's just simply the monthly retainer at two hundred dollars a month. And I just want to make sure that that's the level of representation you all are comfortable with.
Mm-hmm.
At least to get it started.
Mister Chair, I don't know if it's appropriate, maybe we can get consensus from the rest of the board instead of reinventing the wheel. Like, continue with yourself and myself and Monty and Chris.
Okay.
Meeting with Kathy, if that's.
Are you guys good with that?
That's okay with the rest of the board.
I'm okay with that.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, excellent. Well, I will make the arrangements then.
Sounds good. Thanks, Monty.
Yeah, thanks.
All right. Roxanne, you've been waiting patiently. Maybe Brian has been too.
Uh, Mister Chair, uh, good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
So the item that I bring before you is, uh, a resolution for True County. Uh, we discussed this back in July at the committee of a whole in pretty good detail, I guess. Um, also brought this to the city and township meeting on July twenty-second to, um, you know, let everyone know that this is where we were heading. Or looking at, and also, uh, at the township meeting on September nineteenth. Um, and, and I believe that, you know, we've been pretty clear with, uh. You know, that I'm willing to work in good faith with all of the jurisdictions that are currently, uh, hiring their own local assessor. Um, but I also have let them know that, you know, that, that local assessor now would be, uh, direct supervised by me and, and the county itself. And so the expectations are that they follow, uh, policies and procedures that are, you know, set forth by the county assessor. But, so basically, this, this resolution and what I'm asking is, um, it would basically enable the county assessor. To, uh, provide the assessment for all taxable property. That would start on January second, twenty twenty-six. Um, so we'll finish up the twenty-five assessment. All assessment books would then come back to us ninety days prior to that. Um, and that's something that we need to work, I guess, towards with the board on, you know, a fee schedule, because we're going to continue to charge a per parcel rate. Uh, so we'll get that added to the fee schedule coming up this year. And then just with the timing, you know, January second is our magic assessment date. You know, so October is not the greatest time to take over, right? Three months prior to that date, so, you know, do we let them finish up on January second, twenty twenty-six and then go from there? So, um, you know, that, that to, to be worked out, and I think that, uh, you know, the, the townships and cities are, are aware of that, so.
Mister Chair, if I could, just for clarification, Brian, I'm a little, little bit confused. Understand the True County thing.
Yeah.
Understand the timeline you're talking about. My understanding was, is that the couple townships, uh.
And the City of Rice.
Or City of Rice, that they would continue on with that until they no longer had a local or chose.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Availability, and so I just want to clarify.
Yeah, so if the True County resolution is passed on January second of twenty twenty-six, they will no longer, the, the city. The local jurisdictions will no longer have, uh, the authority to hire a local assessor. But that does not mean that I can't hire them to work in that jurisdiction for, under the county.
Yeah.
So in other words, just like we are doing it now with our current agreements with Eric Skoquist in Glendareto. Um, he has an agreement with us to be the local assessor in that area, but we, we charge that jurisdiction, then we pay him a portion of those. You know, fe- fees, uh, or the charge to him, so.
But that wouldn't necessarily hold you to do that, though, right?
No. It doesn't, it doesn't, well, uh.
Like, Eric, this Eric, I don't know who.
Yep, yep.
Uh, let's just say you determine that you're no longer on to work with them.
Correct.
So as the assessor, then you can do that and they're.
That is correct.
And I, I've had the same call with the City of Rice. They are not, they don't, do not, uh, really appreciate this agreement.
Yep.
They want to be able to hire their assessor and do the county, you know, do what they're doing now. If their assessor doesn't want to do them or retires, then they would, they know they have to go to the county. But they don't want the county involved in the hiring and everything else that goes with it.
I think this, this, uh, um, uh, situation or the, this agreement that we're entering into is going to allow that. We keep the Rice one on, provided they follow our rules and everything.
But we're going to set the rate and everything like that, and they don't, that's, that's not what they really want.
I don't know how we do this, uh, you know, because, because here's the deal, we, we go and hire two assessors, which we already got a staff of that. Then all of a sudden Granite Ledge Township and, and Glendareto Township say, oh, next year. We're going to take our own back on. Now we're back to the drawing board trying to figure out how to pay for these individuals.
But I, I, can't we do it in some way that will allow these entities to continue as they are? Until their assessor, they retires. That was what they were under the understanding was from that meeting is that they would be allowed to operate as they are. Until their assessor either no longer wants to or retires.
Uh, Mister Chair and Commissioners, I know at the, at the township and city meeting, I guess I, I believe I was pretty clear that. You know, they would no longer have the authority to hire a local assessor, but that doesn't mean that we can't keep them on.
Right, and I think they're.
Through the county, and I, I believe that that was discussed, um, you know, in pretty good detail with them. But, I mean, I do understand their point, but I also want to make sure that we have stability in the assessor's office with.
What's the difference in the fee based on what they're charging than what we propose to charge?
The fees, the fees that they charge, I don't necessarily get those agreements, but I know that they're fairly close. Um, I, I, I believe that, and I guess they don't quote me, but I believe the City of Rice is paying between ten and eleven dollars a parcel. And that's, I believe, what, you know.
They never said.
Yeah, I, and again, I, I don't think it's so much the fees. I, I, I do believe that, you know, they want to have the authority to hire that person. I understand that. Um, but with, um. Uh, the, the number of local assessors going down, the stability, we've hired enough capacity. I think this is more to, to, if they want to keep their local assessor as long as they're working under the parameters that are, that are being, uh, offered to them. Um, that they would be able to stay on and do that. The pricing would be set at our, you know, at the annual. You know, what are we charging as far as the county? And obviously, um, we can't be paying them more than what we're charging, so we wouldn't be subsidizing the other way. So it'd have to be an agreement, just like it is now between, uh, the county and the local assessor that they would stay on in that jurisdiction.
Mister Chair, Brian, are you, are your expectations that the ones that are currently doing that can work within the parameters of your office? Or is there?
Well, I want to give them the benefit of the doubt. I have had several issues with, um, one of the local assessors that we've had, and I've had to work through. A lot of that, and I spent a lot of time of my own time, um, which is above and beyond costing the county money. Um, you know, as far as, you know, Mayhew Lake and, and I know that their, uh, you know, uh, Joe Skapansky is, uh, the supervisor there. Has really, um, you know, they've had the same local assessor for thirty years, and then Eric took over and worked with that local assessor. And wants to keep that. I have no issues with that whatsoever.
And, you know, all three of them are Mayo Lake, Langola and. And Rice, and I, I don't believe any of them want the county to take over their assessing at this point. They will when something happens, but.
Is it a fair statement that it's your intent to keep them on at this point?
Yeah, it's my intent to work with them and absolutely keep them on if, if they're, you know, if they're willing to just, you know, work within the parameters that. And it's the parameters that they've been given the last couple of years. So it's not, when I have a local assessor meeting, you know, policies and procedures and things that we do. Under the county assessor in our staff within the office, the expectation is the same of them as what is in the office, so.
Yeah, the expectation's the same, but you know what? It's losing that control of, of bringing them out there.
Yeah, the.
I, I think with having the assessment occurring in the county assessor's office. We are having a more fair assessment across the county versus differing opinions of how the process should occur.
Sure.
In differing areas. So if, if a local assessor is continually undervaluing properties in a specific city or township. That affects the county as a whole. So you're, you're not getting that tax base from that specific county or that township or city. Because it's continually undervalued. And so we're spreading it across other areas when we have to increase taxes.
Yeah.
Um, so if we're keeping this, the entire county under the county assessor's office, you, you do have that control. With Brian overseeing everything.
How many total parcels between those, the Langola?
Graham and Rice.
And this, and Alberta Township as well.
Okay.
So there's Alberta Township.
Alberta Township too.
Correct.
Are we talking like thirty percent or?
No, it's about, like, right now, I would say about two thousand parcels, and we currently are about sixteen-five. Is what we're doing in-house, so.
So about a half a staff person?
Correct.
And, and the townships will still have that ability at their, um, sort of equalization.
Yeah, they still would hold their local board just as they do now.
Right.
So they still have that authority to make changes to the assessment, classification, evaluation as a local board. They still hold their meetings. Uh, just like they can hold them now.
Mister Chair, Commissioner Pop, are they looking for additional in, uh?
I think they need additional information before.
Or do they want additional language put in this contract stating that they can have? I mean, it's in here.
But I know Mayo Lake is really set, non-set to go this route. They don't want to. And the City of Rice just called me, well, she actually called this morning, that they didn't like some of the language that it had said. They were under the understanding that they would be able to continue as is for as long as they want.
I think that's.
This is not going to happen this way.
Mister Chair, I think, sorry, I, I, I think the way Brian has explained it, at least my opinion, is that. You guys still have, they still have that ability to have that assessor. It's just that Brian will be overseeing them.
But, but I, I think the change, if, correct me if I'm wrong, is now January second of twenty-six.
Six.
They're not going to have that option.
Well, from what Brian is telling me right now is that they will have the opportunity under Brian.
Only if we hire them, and that's the part they're not, they're not happy with.
Is there some language that we could put in there? You know, maybe, maybe we table it, but is there language that would appease everybody? Because I'll, I'll be honest with you, I'm, I'm in favor of, of the True County.
So am I.
Because of the liability we have on the assessing. But is there, is there some language that we could put in there as, hey, as long as you, you meet this parameter, this parameter? I've got, we've got no problem hiring you.
Yeah, I, I don't think that there's language. And True County, when you pass a True County resolution, that puts all of the authority under the county assessor's office. So I mean, that's, I don't know that there's necessarily language other than.
No, what I'm saying is, is would you put some language in here saying, hey, as long as your assessor meets this, this and this?
Meets all the criteria.
We've got no problem.
I, I don't know that that's necessary because they are held to those standards anyways by statute.
Mm-hmm.
They have to follow certain criteria. Have, they have to follow certain criteria. It's just some are more difficult to work with and do the absolute minimum.
Am I reading between the lines here a little bit on?
Yes.
Things? Okay. Is this something that's got to be done in a timely manner? Like, is there statutes?
Well, I mean, it, it goes in, the resolution once passed would go into effect the second assessment after. So, you know, if it's passed in twenty twenty four, it would go into effect January second of twenty twenty six.
But what I'm saying is, is if, if we push this to the next meeting, if we tabled this to the next meeting, so that you could have a little bit more commu-, because it sounds like you just got some questions today on this.
Yeah, I did. One, one I answered, or one I didn't.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if.
I think, I don't think they really want answers from me. I think they want answers from Brian.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, and, and I think it comes down to, I, I mean, I understand that they want the authority to hire a local for all of eternity until their current one leaves, which then a, then a true county resolution cannot get passed. Because it, I don't think that necessarily, um, you know, once you pass a true county resolution, I can hire them, which is what we, you know, or the county can hire them.
Yeah.
Um.
The problem I see is if we have this linger, then all of a sudden we're going to loo-, we're going to lose a few other townships that were doing this because they got somebody that comes in and proposes, you know, fifty cents less. But that fifty cents less.
We have agreements with them townships now, right?
We do. Um, many of the agreements expire in twenty twenty seven.
Okay.
Um, but again, you know, we have had agreements and we usually do a five-year agreement with the tiered step like, like you've seen. Um, it's just, uh, I think getting everybody at the same level. And, 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 you know, I'm hoping that down the road in the future that, you know, that fee schedule can slowly be weaned off. And then maybe the townships don't then have to levy for that, you know, they can slowly taper that down. And that's the hope that we wouldn't then bill them, but.
I just, at this point, I just don't think that, um, I don't think they're informed enough. I don't think, you know, there was once, one, one, um, councilman, uh, Camper was at the township meeting. And I don't know what she went back and told the city of Rice, but they were not under the understanding of this.
I thought it was pretty clear.
I did too, but.
So did I, yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, in, in essence of this, i- if we passed or denied this at the next board meeting, would that still allow us to do it twenty, twenty-sixth of January?
It would.
Okay.
Okay. Would that give you enough time to talk?
And Brian enough.
And Brian, yeah. I, I, I personally think this is a way to go. And if we just got to communicate a little bit more to them on understanding. But we also got to, we got to make sure that they're following, that what scares me, if something's undervalued, it affects the whole county. And if that's been happening, that, that's not a good situation either.
Yeah.
Move the table to the next board meeting, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to table to the next board meeting. Any other questions? All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Brian. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Roxanne.
All right. It looks like the next item we have is the MOA for the Mississippi River Sartell Watershed Water Management Planning Process. Um, this is our third and final one watershed, one plan. And then I'm sure we'll getting it, we'll get into updating all the plans on a continual basis. Um, but this is the final one. It does include the counties of Stearns, Morrison, Benton, of course. And then, uh, the Malax Band of Ojibwe are included in this. Uh, primarily Morrison and Stearns County, um, SWCDs are doing the majority of, uh, the work on the plan. We are participating and, and a member of that, um, but they're doing the fiscal work and, um, drafting all of the materials. So we are looking to sign the MOA and to appoint a primary and alternate commissioner for the policy committee.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
So Malac or Morrison County is going to be the fiscal agent?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll do the first motion. I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other questions for Roxanne on this memorandum of agreement? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, I will make a motion for Commissioner Pop to be the, uh, uh, primary and I'll make a motion or I, can we do it all in one motion?
Yes, we can do the primary and the alternate in one motion.
And I, I'll do Commissioner Johnson as the alternate.
Mr. Chair, I believe that's because they've been working on all the other watersheds.
Correct.
And actually, the, the Rum River is down to four meetings a year, I believe, right now. So that one's, you know, and we're such a small portion of that.
And I thank both of you for your work you've done on these.
Should be pretty easy, I would think, after going through the other two, right?
Professionals by now.
And it's easier to appoint a primary and alternate that have been working on it for quite some time.
Sure appreciate your vote of confidence, Mr. Chair.
Even though it runs through all of our districts finally.
Well, seeing as no more questions, I'll call it. All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign. Unanimous.
Yep.
All right, Commissioner Pop, look for an email. They're, they're are ready to start holding these meetings. So as soon as I submit this, uh, signed agreement and provide the primary and alternate, they'll be sending out emails to set up the policy committee meetings.
There you go.
Can't be too soon.
Nope.
Do you check your emails in a tractor or the combine?
Nope, I do not.
All right.
Get another screen.
Yep.
Bogart Peterson.
All right, here's the fun one. So we received our first bill from Bogart Peterson for, um, the Wetland Conservation Act Administration and some shore land work. That bill is seven thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. I did the math on this to determine what we would have paid out to a staff person for this time period. Um, and so we generally pull a certain portion of the salary from our, uh, WACA funds that are from the natural, um, natural resource grant fund. We can dedicate a portion of those funds towards salary. Um, so during that same timeframe for tho- that, those amount of hours, we would have pulled out one thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars, sixty-four cents. And then for shore land, um, we do have a significant amount of funds in the shore land account. So we can charge back everything, um, that was shore land related. So that's seven hundred and seventy dollars. And then, um, we generally pull out from the P and Z revenue, two thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars. That leaves a gap of three thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars that we cannot account for through the P and Z accounts. Um, while I would like to charge all of this back to the natural, the NRBG funds, um, we, those funds have to last us through, uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And because we pull salaries out of that, we pull fuel out of that, uh, supplies out of that account, we do need to make sure that we have funds in that account. Um, so I am here to ask if the county board is willing to pull the requested amount, uh, from the commissioner contingency fund and to cover that gap from the commissioner contingency fund until we have, uh, paid Bogart Peterson uh, for all of the services through their contract. And I will note that we did post, um, on, uh, I believe it was la- late last week, we did post the wetland, uh, position. So that will be, the first poll of those applicants will be on November fourth. And we do have Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Pop on that selection committee. Um, and then I did talk to Bogart Peterson about having their current wetland, uh, delineator assist us with those interviews. Uh, Robert, uh, Pete Patterson, Patterson? Um, and they believe, Craig has indicated that that would be acceptable to have him sit in on those interviews. Just so we have someone who is qualified, um, and understands WACA and identifying wetlands as part of that, uh, interview process.
Mr. Chair, I'm trying to understand why this is, why this is coming out of our fund. Isn't there different funds or anything that this could have came out of instead of throwing it to us?
I'll defer to Monty.
Sure, sure. Well, uh, I suggested to Roxanne contingency because I was unable to come up with some other source. Uh, as Roxanne pointed out, is we have a finite amount of grant dollars, what we call a WACA, Wetland Conservation Act dollars. And, you know, certainly the issue is the, the, the bill by hourly rate for Bogart is substantially above the hourly rate for employee. So there's just simply not enough resources in that bucket for the Bogart bills.
What, what do we have, what do we have coming yet? Uh, that was another comment. What other projects are they working on for us? And do we know about what them bills might be?
It, it really depends on the applications that come in. We have a significant amount of wetland projects that happen in Benton County. Um, and this just goes to show the amount of work that that position does on wetlands. And I, I, I mean, it, it actually supports the rationale behind, um, increasing the grade and classification for that position.
Mr. Chair, uh, we had a discussion earlier, Monty. From my perspective, I have zero issue with the billing. I, I thank you for putting together all the information. My personal opinion is I don't believe it's a commissioner contingency issue. I'd be much more in favor of just running a line item over budget with board approval. I realize the end effect is probably the same, but to open the door to commissioner contingency funds because we can't find funds somewhere else, I'd much rather, because this is something we established, is we over, but we overspend on that line item, whatever that line item is.
Yeah, it's, it's professional services. Yeah.
That's just.
Yeah. And if we had somebody in that position right now, we wouldn't be getting this invoice.
That is true. Right. I mean, we, the possess, possess, as Roxanne said, is it, you know, it's, the positions cost are spread across several different sources. Solid waste, wetlands and general revenue too.
And I, I mean, I want to be really clear is that we created this.
Position.
Position. I just don't feel it's a commissioner contingency line item.
Sure.
I see that, I, I, I like your, your train of thought there just for the fact that there's other positions within the county that if they're vacant, there's, you know, we're not paying anybody to be in those positions. Now, obviously with, uh, with, um, Sierra not being here, about a month and a half now. I mean, there's, there's a few funds that we would have paid out that could, could be transferred over there until it won't be enough probably to cover everything, but.
Yeah, again, the issue is again, that hourly rate is substantially more than, it's what, seventy-five dollars an hour more possibly?
Yeah. And again, I think we're aware of that. I think, you know, the expense is what it is at this point. It's just where it's coming from.
Yep.
For my, for my position.
I like your, your point of having it run over.
Let Monty and Roxanne decide whatever that line item is in that area and we run it over with board approval.
Yep.
If, if that's your consensus, we wouldn't need any action. Um, we just have that understanding. It would be charged the planes on a budget and, and, um, and until those bills end, right?
But she, but, but Roxanne shouldn't get penalized on this either.
No, and that's not the point. I don't want to penalize our budget. It's just we've approved that.
Yeah.
We are okay going over on that line item. I think that happens.
Okay, okay.
You know, if she had a major event show up or something, probably approve it and she'd be over on that budget line. It's kind of the same.
Same thing. Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that she doesn't get penalized by all this coming out of her budget.
I agree a hundred percent. That's not the point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Birdman.
He wasn't back there flipping their Facebook, was he?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
All right, uh, so the first item I have for you, speaking of consultants, is, uh, consider awarding a consultant contract for the design of Casatua reconstruction. This is a construction project that is scheduled for twenty twenty-seven. We had received some federal money for it, but since that time, we've been able to transfer that federal money away from that reconstruction project to another recon-, uh, another construction project in our five-year plan. But it still requires the services of, of an engineer. We just don't have the staff in-house to, to accomplish this. So we issued a request for proposals, an RFP as it's commonly called, and we received proposals from five, uh, very good, uh, engineering companies. Uh, just some numbers to run through for you. Uh, the prices ranged from as low as a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars to over four hundred thousand dollars to design this, this project. So when we look at professional services, uh, we, we, we don't go with the low bid. We look for the best value alternative. And so we, we are chosen, are choosing KLJ to provide the best overall, uh, value for this. Uh, they, they're providing a fee, or their fee to design this project would be just under two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. When we were evaluating proposals, uh, we have them provide us with a write-up of how they approach to, to complete the work. And that's what I've attached here. We also asked them to provide a fee schedule, um, that provides this name of the staff or certainly the positions of the staff working on it and the hours that they plan on working on each of those tasks. So that's a big part of what we do when we look at, uh, proposals. We compare those and we look at the hours that they're setting aside to do each task to design that project and see if that's reasonable. Sometimes we'll see projects or proposals that we don't think have enough hours on it. And that could potentially open us up to a contract amendment. If, if they use up all their hours and all their budget, they may, and don't have the project done, they may try to ask for more money. Or also we look and say, did they put too many hours on there? And will there be a tendency to try to bill up to those hours that they proposed when we don't really think it would take that many hours to do that task? So we selected KLJ. They're kind of in the middle. Um, they, they, they showed that they're going to spend about two thousand and fifty-five hours designing that. Um, one of the lowest was only nine hundred and eighty-two hours. Uh, where the highest was about spending about twenty-six hundred hours to design this project. So.
So almost a year for one person to design this project.
Yeah, correct. Yep. So, um, that's, that's really what it takes. Um, so then we use those hours and their total fee. And although they have different positions, working different hours at different rates, we kind of look at maybe an overall hourly rate. And once again, that equates to the range of, on the low end was about a hundred and twenty-eight dollars per hour, whereas the high end was a hundred and seventy-nine dollars an hour. The average of these five consultants was one forty-seven, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. So that's another way of looking at it too. To design, you know, this is about five mile project reconstruction, even in sand country. Uh, it could cost using a consultant almost a hundred and fifty dollars an hour to have that designed. That's why we need to get started on this now. This isn't going to be completed. We're giving them in our proposal or request proposal, our timeline was about a year and a half we're giving them to, to design this. So we're hoping in the spring of twenty twenty-six, we have final plans. That way we can get all the approvals that we need, make sure we have all the right away that we need for the twenty twenty-seven construction season. So.
Commissioner Hyden.
Mr. Chair, Chris, in the future, I'd like, we'd like, I would like to sit down to have an understanding of why it takes that many hours, over two thousand hours. What's put into it? Okay, I mean, just like the comment you brought up, Mr. Chair, is that it's almost one full year of one individual?
Right.
Going through this process, I need to have a better understanding of what this really takes, you know, what, what's put into this?
So I kind of, I was going through it and I looked too, Mr. Chair, that I had the same thought. It's one full year for two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. I mean, can't we hire one of these people away from this deal for two hundred thousand dollars and put sixty-nine thousand in our pocket?
I mean, that's, that's discussion, yeah, that, uh, we've tried to have. When you look at our labor rate for engineering technicians, with their benefits, we're paying about fifty dollars an hour for them. Um, so the hourly, and once again, because yeah, we're, we're hiring a private company. So we're paying overhead, um, to that company to get to that point. It, it, I mean, we had a brief conversation when it came back, the comp and class study for our engineering technician position. And the recommendation was no increase. Um, I think this is, this is what we're competing against. If we don't have it in-house, we have to go out, outside to, to provide these services. So, but the question, do we want to compare ourselves to the private market or not?
No, we don't want that, but there's a happy medium.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, Chris, Monty, just for clarification, so source of funds, local levy? Mister Chair, Chris, Monte, just for clarification, so source of funds, local levy?
Correct.
So this is a Kasaa road?
Correct.
So are we not, we can't use Kasaa funds towards this? Or when I, when I see local levy, that's.
Yep, correct.
So we don't use Kasaa funds towards it? And does this mean we're using wheelage tax?
No, this would be levy and it's bud, it was part of my twenty twenty-five budget. It was part of this cost.
Engineering on this.
Correct.
That happens.
It's in that cost.
Okay, s- okay. So levies pay an engineering cost even on a Kasaa road?
Yes. So, and, okay, so we could recoup uh, some engineering from our Kasaa fund. Uh, we, we traditionally have not, uh, because we try to maximize what we can design in-house. And think about it, that would take two hundred and seventy thousand dollars away from a construction project. So you know, that's two miles of an overlay we wouldn't be able to do.
Yeah.
Uh, or something like that. So.
But the, but this cost for engineering is in your total budget for that Kasaa two. That's in, it's in there, right?
Well, it's, it's in my twenty twenty-five road and bridge budget for, for next year, at least part of the costs are. And then I anticipate some more of the cost to be in twenty twenty-six. So, no, when we're looking at five million dollars, that's just the construction cost. So a lot of times in the five-year plan, you're just seeing the construction costs and maybe the right-of-way costs.
So then historically, engineering has come out of the levy.
Cor- correct, yeah, for us, yeah.
Regardless of the road number.
Yeah, we've tried to do as much as we can um, with levy, so.
So, you know, just thinking outside the box, your engineering techs, let's just say they make seventy thousand dollars a year. Whatever, whatever that number was.
Yeah, that's, it'd be about thirty-five dollars an hour, yeah.
Why wouldn't we bump them to the hundred thousand dollars and bring this stuff in-house?
Because we can't find them.
Well, I think you could for additional monies.
Right, but so then you unbalance that whole pay scale.
Well, I think we're unbalanced the way it is.
I, I, it's, it's. I want to be respectful with this question. Are they qualified to do this?
Yeah, so KLJ recently completed the reconstruction plans for Kasaa seven.
I'm sorry, uh, are your engineering techs qualified to do this?
Um, well, we only have one right now.
Okay, so would that person be qualified to do this?
Uh, if they had the, the time, yeah.
Okay.
But, but um.
Well, they have the qualifications. It's an issue of time and.
Yeah.
Commissioner Pop? Oh, that was Tim.
You're so much more fun to blame.
I know.
So I, I didn't attach the whole fee schedule, but uh, that's something that we can drill down at a future meeting if you like. I mean, this cost also includes surveying because we're looking at our time, uh, well, even yet this fall. Uh, hopefully we can get surveying done this fall. We couldn't provide that. There was thirty thousand dollars just for surveying costs in there. Um, then, then you have the actual CAD person, you have project management, uh, public outreach, acquiring the, the stormwater permits from us. We don't anticipate a lot of wetland work, but still you got to go through that process to, to prove that you're not going to be impacting wetlands.
You got a cemetery there you're dealing with.
That, that's, that's one of the challenges, yeah.
Chris, how would, do you know off the top of your head how this quote-unquote hourly hundred and forty-seven dollar average compares to Kasaa seven's project? Engineering?
Yeah, so the average of the five, I think it was about, very similar. So um, KLJ, their, their hourly rate comes out to one thirty-seven or one thirty, a hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. So they're below the average for the hourly rate, even though their total price was uh, more in the middle. So.
They got more hours.
They're gonna take more hours, yeah.
Yeah. So, and, and we, since once again, hours were kind of in the middle. Um, we see that that gives us some flexibility. If we look at the task and say, we make a determination, okay, we don't have to do all that engineering work you planned on. That saves some hours there. Maybe we need to throw that to a different task or um, whatnot. So I, I try to shy away from the highest because there's going to be a tendency on their side to, to invoice us for those, those maximum amount of hours that they put on their, their proposal.
I, I, I do like the fact that it, it's a low dollar amount, but more hours. So, I mean, if we could take some of that stuff back in, as long as they're willing to credit us, you know, dollar for dollar on those hours. Does that happen or not?
One of those things like you, you know, you recently approved a new position that we haven't got filled for next year, environmental tech. It's conceivable in the future that we, we can handle all the environmental permitting, environmental documentation. But that was in their proposal uh, as well, because that position's vacant now. Some of that work may need to start immediately with early notifications things.
So, so let's just say.
We're doing this in twenty twenty-seven. We got some time here, don't we?
Not really. We're hoping, because remember the trees. We got to start removing trees in the winter of twenty twenty-six.
So.
There might be a one-eyed bat in there.
So.
How do you really feel about that?
So hypothetically, if you were full-staffed, and we had this, this uh, this ditch tech or whatever, engineering tech or whatever it is, environmental tech coming on, would you be able to take on most of this design, you know, on yourself?
I think maybe, maybe not all of it, but a lot of it. I mean, we could save some costs with um, preliminary survey.
Seventy percent, sixty percent savings?
Yeah, it's tough to say. I mean. Years ago, we, we would, twenty fourteen, Kasaa six, we can reconstruct it that. That was a federally funded project that was designed in-house. Um, kind of since that time, that position's been a revolving door. We have not been able to design a reconstruction project in-house. So if we had three highly qualified technicians, um, I would say if they were all three at that senior level, maybe we could do at least seventy percent of that. But if we, we're hiring three right out of college or their tech school, probably, probably not.
Where I was going with this is, wouldn't we, I mean, just thinking outside the box, if we partnered with another county or two and hired one lead designer, and everybody knew that they had to have two engineering techs to, to do the, the grunt work. Couldn't we, couldn't we get a little further along on these projects without, without going outside i- to a private industry?
I, I, I like that. Plus, we may be able to use them for A for a little bit or B for a little bit, you know.
Yeah.
We may be able to spread them around.
And spread that cost out.
My question is, over the past, since we did, let's go back as far as seventy-eight. So since we did seventy-eight, what else have we designed that we went outside? We did seven. You know, if you start adding all them up, maybe we need to reassess our, uh, who we have in-house.
Yeah, I mean, no doubt the, the number of projects have increased too due to our uh, increase in revenue sources, so.
Your five-year road plan shows fifty million.
That's right.
Projects.
And, and when you think of this, so yeah, we're about ten to twelve percent of the construction costs for uh, consultant cost, so.
Five million?
Mister Chair, you know, just to, in sake of moving forward, I think we, you know, in the future, we need to have a sit-down conversation with Chris and, and talk about engineer tech salaries, wages, you know. And we're farming all this out.
Yeah.
And the amount of money that is costing us to farm this out, okay, we need to have a better look at this.
But we have to slow down the revolving door for Chris because you can't work with one tech through half the project and then another one comes on. That's got to be just a nightmare for you.
It, it is, because we're constantly training and we're not being able to maximize our productivity because um, in many cases, they're still just learning how counties operate.
And Mister Chair, you love the math. Again, it's a fifty million dollar five-year road project.
Oh, my God. But the numbers are just going through my head. I know. That's not, that's going to be levy.
If you can't, if we can't hire somebody for five million bucks for five years, we got troubles.
Chris probably applied for that job.
He's got enough jobs already.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, a- and that's the thing. In, in our world, there are people that provide that same services for us. A- and I can show you invoices of what it costs per hour to do that.
We're, we're not going to get away from consultants.
No.
A hundred percent of the time.
But we got to try and minimize.
We can do a better job of minimizing it in the future.
And that's a good point. The, the real point is what, how are we spending the two hundred and seventy grand?
Right.
I mean, you evidently didn't like the hundred and seventy-six thousand for, you know.
Well, they, because they, they had a lot less hours, so the hourly rate uh, ended up being the highest. So you look at that and it's like, you try to read their, their, how they write up, and you think, okay, what if we get into it and we need them to do a little bit extra? Boom, that's another, you know, a hundred and eighty dollars an hour just to do some extra tasks.
But ain't a contractor a contract? I mean.
Well, yeah, unless we, we have extras that we get into something and they'd, like, for example, we are roundabout project. Uh, we get into that and all of a sudden, boom, Excel says nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to relocate. Okay, we go back to our engineer and it's like, okay, they're, they're saying it's going to cost this much. Can we do something? Can we move our design around? Well, we didn't anticipate shifting design around in our proposal. That's additional engineering hours. Those kind of things can come up. I don't anticipate things like that. A lot of times things, things come up in right-of-way though. A landowner says, well, I've got this, I've got this drain tile in my field, or no, I, I, I don't like where you want to put my driveway. So we got to redesign something on the roadway to, because they're becoming an unwilling negotiator. So.
I'm just.
Future discussion.
Yeah.
Let the two hundred and sixty-nine thousand bucks on a.
Five-mile road?
On a five-mile road.
Chris, not that I want to uh, kick the can, but how bad would this beat you up if we ended up tabling this one until uh, next meeting?
Um, I mean, they're hoping to get started. I mean, they're, all the proposals were written that they'd hope to get started right. And, and that would be the goal was still do a topo survey this fall before the ditches get filled with snow. So we can, you really need to see, this time of year is actually pretty good. If vegetation gets mowed down and stops growing, you could see all those changes in, in the ground wa- ground that you survey and then bring that into your design.
Well, I'm just wondering, maybe there's some, some negotiations with them that we could, we could figure out.
Limit their scope?
Yeah, and, and that's what we're looking at. We just don't have the staff availability to really take on any of this right now.
Mister Chair, and that's correct. If we don't have the staff, there's not a lot of negotiation we can do because we're going to have to do it all. Because we can't.
And by the time we get staff in.
Yeah.
This project are going hold for a long, a long. It'd go on hold.
Yeah, and then we'd have another project that we push back.
To be in because here, spend this or else put us shit off.
Right.
Just anecdotally, last week we talked about the Gilman project and um, I was secretly kind of relieved because with the recent resignation of our one technician, it was anticipated that they would be inspecting that project next year. And so, eh, since they resigned and then Gilman asked to delay the project, that's why we were open to it, because we didn't have.
What was the number one reason that they resigned? Do you think, was it wage?
One of the reasons was counties have been known as, one of the biggest benefits that they can provide is time off. A- and I, I agree. I think we've got a very um, generous time off accrual rate. But when we're telling them things like, well, next year, we've got a busy construction season, we, we're going to have to limit time off requests during the construction season. That was one of the reasons why they came to work for a county was they, they thought that they could take off, you know, when they needed to. And it, and it's a compounding effect. Since we had a vacancy already, we don't have another, a third person to kind of spread that workload off to. Yeah. Our workload and lack of being able to fill these positions has in some ways taken away a benefit that the county can provide. If you look at time off as a benefit, and it is to some, you know, some companies don't have as much time off allowed to employees.
But yet, but yet you look at the contractors that are doing the work. I mean, what, a year ago when they were doing County Road One, they were out there at eight o'clock at night yet.
Yes, yes.
I mean, the companies that are paying the money for people doing the work are there till eight o'clock, but our engineer techs think they can go home at five.
Well, I do know that, Mister Chair, I do know that some of the engineer techs have stayed there until the construction people have stopped working hours, correct, Chris?
Eh, yeah.
But not everybody wants to work like that.
And that's, you get to this time of year, our one technician is still out on Kasaa seven, working long hours. But when the contractor shuts down for the winter, then that's when they would like to take off. So that's when the design work would happen. I- is in the winter time. But those, those when our field people, well, now they finally get to take some time off.
Well, Mister Chair, you know, we, we, we've come to a roadblock that we have to fix. But today, we're not going to fix that.
No.
Okay? And, and in, in order to keep this project moving forward, whether we like the proposal or not, I am more in favor of having somebody that has more hours on the table instead of somebody with less hours on the table. Now, Mister Chair, I'm going to make a motion to accept the proposal of KLJ Engineering, authorize engineering and professional service contract.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve this. I, I would like more time. I'm going to be opposed to it, to be quite honest with you. I want to, I, I would like to see us move it to one, you know, the next meeting. Only for the fact that this is a compounding issue that we have with all the projects we got coming up. And I know that we got to get this one going down the road, but this is a perfect time for us to take, uh, take a little bit of a step and go, holy cow, what do we got?
Mister Chair, would it be a fair thing to limit, to keep things rolling, to limit their scope to start out with? Till we can have more discussion on how we're going to go, because it sounds like we don't have a full consensus here. I don't know if there's a way to limit their scope and get them going, but.
The next step would be to enter into a contract negotiation. So theoretically, we could just write the contract to, to say what we want them to do now. And then, then we could either enter into a second contract or amend the original contract to add that additional scope. And. Eh, eh, possible. There's, there's always risks for that too. They could say, well, we didn't have the full scope, so we scheduled our employees to do other jobs. Now the fee is going to be a little bit more or something.
I, and, and, and for the record, I get the motion and I, I get moving forward one hundred percent. But I see this, I, I, the only reason I'm opposed to it is, is we need to have conversations. And it, this has got to be driven right now with all of us, because if it's, if it's because we're not allowing people vacation, it, that's the same thing we found out with comp and, comp time and overtime in other departments around here. If we're shorthanded there, but yet the class and comp study doesn't allow us to go up in pay grades, that, that, you know, you know, it just compounds the issue when you can't, you can't hire anybody.
Mister, Mister Chair, you know, this.
Go ahead. Oh, please. No, I'll go next.
This will push it back three more weeks before our first board meeting, or our next board meeting, just so you're aware of that.
Yeah, and, and like I said, I, I, I completely agree with you guys' motion. I do. I just, I want to be on the record to, just to say, we, let's get down, eh, let, if we got to move this one through, let's move it through and, and stuff and, and get it going. But this is going to be a major issue with all this work coming.
Coming forward in the future.
Coming forward.
So Mister Chair, if I could just add, this has always been a tough position to fill and to keep. Is, I think here's why. You're asking someone to bring to the table very high-level technical skills. But you're also asking to spend their summer sitting in a pickup, you know, taking tickets, doing soil samples and so on. And, you know, the long hours in their summers basically gone. It's a tough position to fill and to keep. So I think some, we need some decisions. I think what, in my opinion, you really have to sort of separate the two and they really have two different positions. One is your high-level technical person. That's mostly in, you know, in doing design work in-house. And another person is more the boots-on-the-ground position. For the first position, the high-level tech, we're going to need to pay what that person could get in private sector. We're good, that's the only way we're going to attract and keep someone. So we got to sort of kick out, you know, the county comparisons and really pay what they could get in private sector, if again, you really want this to be done in-house. And we can't pull that together really quickly. It's going to take some study and time. But I've, I've had this thought for a long time, is we've got to deconstruct this position and really it's two different positions. It really is.
I, I would back up what Monte said. The, so those are some of the things that we, when we have been able to interview individuals, those are some of the things we've heard from those that haven't accepted the position. It's like, well, I was really interested in doing the design part of it. But I don't have an interest in being out on a project six. I don't have an interest of being out on a project sixty hours a week in the summer, or vice versa. I'm an outside person, I, I li- wanna be on the construction project, I don't wanna sit at the computer all the time just designing. So we, we've heard one or the other. Eh, it's been tougher to find somebody that's like, yeah, I like to do all things on the project and, and do all that, so.
It's true, right. We have basically job scripts that have been existence for decades, right? And it, it's probably time really to, to turn the corner on this.
Sounds to me we know what direction we need to go now.
Right.
And, and if I may, it sounds like a discussion for a, a committee of the whole, too.
Right, I think we should bring Tessa into this and we need some market studies and again, I think it's a different position than what we have now.
And I guess we gotta move forward and, you know, can't look backwards on what we're spending now, but maybe we can look forward what we can save and if we.
Well, I'm hoping that we can write the contract a little bit to where if we can get our, we'll call it nest cleaned up, maybe we can take on some of those starting next year.
If it's any consolation, I, at the time of my budget proposal or budget, you know, submittals that you approved, some of this, I mean, most of this was budgeted for twenty twenty-five and some of it was budgeted for twenty twenty-six, so, um, I don't see this increasing the, uh, the highway department, you know, proposed budget at this point, so. If that's any consolation.
It is a little consolation.
It's a little.
Call the question, Mister Chair. Okay, we gotta, we, we got the question. All in favor? Oppose, same sign, motion carries. I voted for it. Because of, we, we need to get on this though, and I mean.
I agree.
Chris, I, I'd like to give you a call. I got some ideas after.
Okay.
Very good.
All right, uh, okay, since we're talking about costs, um, the next item I, I would like you to consider, um, is our plow truck situation. So we're still waiting on the replacement of plow trucks that was authorized to be replaced two years ago. Uh, we're still trying to per- replace, uh, two plow trucks that were new in two thousand and two. So at the budget time, um, I presented on a five year, kind of a five year replacement schedule of equipment. So in that five years, i- in twenty twenty-six was proposing to retire, uh, two more plow trucks. So in twenty twenty-six, retire a plow truck that will be twenty-one years old and then repl- retire one that will be twenty years old. But considering it seems to be taking about two years, uh, I would like the board to consider, go ahead and authorizing, putting in an order now, uh, with the understanding that, that it'll be delivered in twenty twenty-six and that's when we would pay for it um, in, in twenty twenty-six. So it's kind of a, as you know, we do budgets one year at a time, um, it's hard to budget that far out, you know, two years, um. Maybe a benefit was if we could put in order now, we can get some kind of assurance on what the price is today.
Yes.
As opposed to waiting until twenty twenty-six.
Mister Chair, Chris, any down payment needed? You can just order this?
No, we'll, we'll, eh, I, I didn't get it included into the agenda item, but I would like you to consider ordering or adopting a, a resolution. We would use the state cooperative purchasing venture or state bid, so we can kind of lock into a contract and those, if we sign a purchase order, they, they usually guarantee the price at that time and no down payment is needed until, till delivery.
Well, and you, Mister Chair, you bring up good point, Chris, and we've had multiple conversations. You're gonna pay for it today or you're gonna pay for it two years? It's gonna be more money.
Yeah.
This is something we've committed to in the capital improvement.
Yes.
With that, I'm gonna move for approval to order the two new plow trucks and adopt the attached resolution that Chris showed us.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. I just think this is smart business. I, I mean, especially if we're not, we don't have to pay for it until the, until it's delivered. Let's get today's price, uh, for tomorrow's delivery.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Chris, on that.
All right, so if you'd like it to, uh, I was gonna give you a little update on the department, uh, so nothing real formal, but on the maintenance side, uh, we've kind of finished our graveling for the year. A lot of our maintenance activities are kind of wrapping up. Right now, we're in a mode where our motor graders are out on our gravel roads, just, uh, re, re-scraping those. And they're gonna run continuously, probably until the roads freeze up, so you can expect to see those out there. Our mowers are out and now we're trying to mow the ditches and the back slopes out to the full width of the right of way. We do know this year, we have had a lot of just windfall, when trees down by the wind, not necessarily storms. So we know there's still a lot of trees out there, uh, in the right of way. Our goal is always when they, when they blow down, getting cleared off the road. Uh, so there's, anticipate a lot of brushing to happen in our ditches and back slopes this, this fall, so, um, that, that's kind of what maintenance is doing. And then, yeah, on the equipment side, our mechanic is busy getting all of our trucks DOT'd before winter. And it's always our goal every year to be saddled up and plows attached, uh, by October thirty-first. So in case we ever have a, another Halloween blizzard, we're, we're ready to go. Um, uh, what happens though is the DOT time, we find a lot of things sometimes that need to be replaced. It's kind of like routine stuff. Your, your brake drums are not within spec or your pads are too thin or, or tire tread isn't within spec and so, um, you'll see our, if you were to look at our invoices, a lot of parts go out the, out the door this, this time of year. On the construction side, County Road fifty-three, that reclaimed project is going along nicely. We reclaimed it two weeks ago, uh, replaced pipes two weeks ago, let it sit last week, and then yesterday, they were able to put the, the first lift of a two minutes down. The second lift is planned for Friday. The next week they'll be shouldering and striping, so by the end of next week, that project should, should be done. Uh, and I'm really glad that we were able to advance that this year, even though it was in the, the five-year plan is a twenty twenty-six, uh, twenty twenty-five project. Cassaw seven, still very busy with reconstructing that. So they started from ninety-five and worked one and a half miles to the north. They've got that, they got that subcut, uh, they were building up the base and then they started hauling sand on it last week. And then we saw a lot of soft spots starting to show up in the subgrade, so they've been spending a lot of time reworking those, uh, and trying to see if they can get, uh, the peat that's coming out of there. So what happened is what we saw is that they started hauling trucks on there to bring the sand in. It, it started pumping that muck from down below up into the subgrade, so if we can't get that addressed, we may end up having to just use more fabric on the project so we can, uh, build on top of that. But they have a, a hard stop date of November first for this fall. The intent was to get that regraded, get the sand and gravel up to minus two inches of the gravel this fall, um, and then next spring, uh, you know, open up the rest of the project and, and then a similar date next year to, to finish and have it all paved and, and stuff, so. That's what's keeping our inspector busy. In fact, uh, uh, my assistant had to go out, Mark had to go out into the project yesterday because we had the technician busy with the grading and those soft spots, and then he was out inspecting the paving yesterday in, in Oak Park, so. Uh, keeping us busy will busy, be busy the rest of the month, and then, then we gotta catch up on all of our paperwork from the summer.
I know it's ways out yet, Chris, but have you had conversations of leaving that for the following year before you pave it again, or are you gonna pave it regardless?
No, we're gonna leave it, uh, gravel over the winter.
Over, I'm talking winter of twenty-five.
Oh, no, we haven't really had any more discussions about that, so that's something. The way.
How the plan is to pave it by November first.
Correct, yeah. So I could see them wanting some adjustment on but two minutes prices if oils goes up again over one more year, so, um, we, but well, we want to do what's best for the project, I guess, regardless of cost. If we look at, if we have some issues and we think that it's better to let that sit, then maybe that's the correct course of action and adjust the price based on oil prices, so.
Okay.
Get all the trees out of the road. Stumps.
Stumps, yeah.
All right.
So that's all I had. I'll step aside and be here for a ditch meeting later.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Chris. All right, uh, I'll go next on the airport.
Airport authority.
You know, Monty, we, you sent the email and we still haven't had anybody. I know, I know the assessment, all that stuff got pushed to the side and everything for the year. But you've mentioned you've asked them to be here before. I, I am, I, I don't, I'm, I'm appalled, to be quite honest with you, on how we can't get anybody that we appoint to come to these meetings and explain what was going on. And I don't want to let this, let this go at this point.
Right. I mean, I, I, Mister Chair, I, I agree. I think at this point it's been pushed off a year, but we should, certainly should be able to request that they come in and update us at some point in the short term future. You know, maybe within the next two meetings and come in and have a discussion and just bring us up to date and how they got to the point they were at and what the plan is for the future. I'd feel a lot differently if they hadn't pushed this off.
Yeah.
Right, but I think let's give them a formal request to come in and update us.
We did.
Well, I think we gotta do it one more time and then we're gonna have to move on to another option. I don't know.
Other appointees in my book. I, I'm, I'm very concerned because of just some conversations I've had with other individuals that the city of Saint Cloud has a lot to do with what's going on. And we, in, in my opinion, I'm looking for a way to get out, not move forward, because if we can't get our own appointments to come forward to, to be at the board, I know other counties are having that same.
Same issue.
Same issue. Is this really a tri-county agreement, or is this a Saint Cloud agreement that's pushed off to the counties?
Right.
And I came here honestly to, to basically, and, and I know one of our appointments just got appointed, what, three months ago or whatever, but a- at some point, we need these people to come in front of us and we've asked, I, I, I asked Monty e- expressively to, to get them there within three days of our last meeting. And then we sent another email, or Mo- Monty did, and the individual never even responded. To me, that's not an appointment.
No, no, um, Mister Chair, maybe it's appropriate at this point, draft a letter and have you sign it requesting that they the next two meetings.
Yep, and if they don't show up then, then we.
Then we're gonna move on discussions about the appointments. What else are you gonna do? Attention. I don't, I can't believe we'd have to do that.
Let's just not jump the gun right away. I agree, I mean, for somebody in my position to tell somebody they have to be there in the next two days at that board meeting and change everything that they've got going on is not realistic. Now, I do agree, you know, sending out those notices. And I think we should let Monty, you know, send out notices to both our appointees and I will get a hel- a, a hold of both of the appointees to, to set up a time to come in front of the board, to address the board about, A, what happened and moving forward in the future. And at that point in time, then we can address it with those appointees, uh, letting them know that we would like them to come in front of the board three or four times a year just to give us, you know, what's going on with the airport.
I mean, we have never had any. There, there's. Once, once we've had, we've had, had them here, and when they did come, it wasn't our people that were gonna speak, it was the chairman of the board and the manager of the airport, and I don't wanna hear from them.
I know, I don't.
That's correct.
We're gonna hear from them, then.
We don't need that.
We don't need that appointment. We wanna hear from our two appointees and maybe they need to know where, what the agreement was and what the agreement going forward is so that they got better grounds for next year, cause this agreement was not with what they brought forth, you know.
What's, what's frustrating to me is, is Mon- I, I, I talked to Monty about this and I was very direct about making sure that these individuals came and explained what's going on. And the last email, we, Monty never even got a response.
That's right, I was looking at, I was, I said it September twenty-seventh and I addressed it to our two appointees and suggested that, ask them if they could attend either the Oc- October first or October fifteenth day meeting. Uh, I specifically said that, you know, our board chair wants to hear from our appointees. Bill and, and Brian could certainly attend. Uh, and I did not get a response to that email.
My, my personal feeling is we got two people driving that board and they're not our appointees.
Yep, I, you know, I did, my initial email, I did get a response and that's where you, you saw that reply and it was suggested that all three county boards could meet with the authority as a big group meeting. I don't know if that's still in the works, I have not heard anything, so.
Well, that's a, that's a problem. No- nobody's heard anything.
Yeah.
And we, we, we dodged a landslide of this being on the tax rolls and now it's silent again.
Right.
And to me, there need, there needs to be some kind of a shakeup here. And because I've heard it's supposed to be ten years out.
Right, well, pardon about.
And, and that's what Stearns County said yesterday on, and then I hear it's because of mismanagement from the Saint Cloud side of things. Well, we're in this three county agreement and if one entity miss, mismanages everything and pushes all the funds the next, moving forward onto counties, that's not good. So.
The glaring thing to me too in the, in the proposal was no allegation, allocations were sent. It's just, here's the levy.
Exactly.
Now, I realize Bettons is probably gonna be the lower one, probably. I don't care, it's the principle of it.
It's a principle.
I did ask.
A lot of people aren't gonna be impressed seeing Saint Cloud Airport Authority assessment on their property tax data.
I did ask Potal about that, he did not have that number. He referred me to the county auditors to, to get that number.
They know the dollar, a million dollars even.
Don't know the allocation.
Yeah, so I, you know, if we were told to be somewhere on something that was a levy potential, I'm pretty sure that we'd all be there. And.
And to Commissioner Heinem's point, I agree, to, to say be here in two days, I get it.
Yeah.
It sounds like they were given an early option of October first and then they were given another two weeks later.
Yep, of today.
Today.
Yeah.
But not even an email back.
No.
Right.
I know, I don't understand.
I'll reach, I'll reach out to him. Monty, you reach out to him.
So, am I hearing there's a, uh, cause there's consensus for a, a letter from board chair to our appointees asking them to, to be at a future board meeting, is that?
I actually want it to be a little bit more strict if we're doing that, because they gotta realize that, huh?
Go ahead.
No, they gotta realize that, that we're, we appointed them.
We entrusted them to make sure this runs the way the agreement was, and I don't believe they're doing it.
And, and the, these people were, were appointed after the agreement was put in place.
John was in one of our original.
He's the original.
John Quady and then of course Kevin is replacing for Mayor Hunt Stigger, right?
They've been there since the beginning.
Well, there again, the loop.
Beginning with the agreement.
Yeah.
You know, they drafted all of this agreement.
But if you, if you read the email from our appointee, it's almost like they're the boss and we conform. And, and I don't wanna be, cause I, I'm gonna, I can assure you that if this gets put on the tax roll and, and it's she- it's seen on everybody's taxes, we're gonna get the calls. Not the airport authority.
Tel will put their name and phone number.
Yeah, if they wanna put their name and phone number down below, they, we'll do that. But this, this is, w- we're in an agreement that this could be, this could be a long-term issue and we got no say other than, and, and on our, and.
We got no say other than our appointees.
Pointies.
And I, 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 we're not alone. Stearns County's the same way and I, and, and Sherburne, and I think if push is gonna come to shove in this thing, I think the three out of the four can petition to get out. And we'll get out as fast as we got in, tell them, well, getting in was pretty slow.
And I'm a big back. I'm a big backer of the airport, I really am.
I, you know, yeah.
And it's probably not for public use, it's more for business, growing business communities in our, in our central Minnesota.
Right.
But this is a good way to take away support very quickly.
Yes.
All right.
Agreed, yeah, I agree.
I think, well, it was a Saint Cloud area because it was beneficial for that. They wanted to enlarge it to be a regional area so we could have it better services, but the cities are the ones and the businesses are the ones that benefit the most from it and they need to be um, anting and opting instead of just taxes on all the, all the people in the county.
City of Saint Cloud's supposed to be anting up for ten years.
Yeah, they are.
And they're on the hook for it. It's all in the agreement, so everything's in agreement for all that.
They just wanna get out of it. They wanna pull their commitment down by running levies off the county.
Well, I think they gotta still do their, their certain amount yet.
Yes.
Yeah.
But if, if we got, if it's been misrun to the point of that's, I mean, now, it's all hearsay, what I've heard, because you don't hear it from anybody else, but if it's been misrun, then we gotta fix that, the part that's being misrun.
And then move forward.
And move forward.
Right, I agree, Commissioner Gepinski, you know, but we're just speculating right now, so, let's just get. Right, I agree, Commissioner Gepinski. You know, but we're just speculating right now, so let's just get people in.
Which raises it a great point of come in and talk to us.
That's right.
Yeah, right.
Yep.
But I I wanna hear it from our appointees, not from Bill and and Brian.
I agree. If we gotta go off speculation, we're gonna go down hard with the hammer.
Yeah, I, like I, like we all said, we're, there, other counties are in the same boat as we are.
Yeah.
And and the other commissioners in the other counties have the same opinion as we have up front here.
And all counties were on a three-two vote too.
Mm-hmm.
Not on a five-o vote when this is approved. So, you know, you got a couple commissioners that are sitting there that are just eager to say, get out.
Yep. All right. We're gonna take just a short break. He needs to.
Health Board.
We'll call it our other Benton County Community Health Board. Everybody's in presence. Amu, anything to add to the agenda, Jaclyn?
One thing, um, looking to see if I could add a question about the DDA.
Excuse me?
Got it.
Excuse me?
Nothing.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, yes, I was wondering if I can add a discussion relating to the DDA.
DDA, okay.
Sure.
Yeah, DDA.
David Drone?
Drone and Associates. Okay.
Move for approval of the amended agenda, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda item one and two, what would we like to do with that?
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Jaclyn, consider res- resolution to accept funds from Medica County Innovation Funding. Go ahead.
Yes, so, um, Benton County Public Health, if you recall, um, back at the, uh, board meeting in August, we had requested some, um, opportunities to explore some potential funding sources from Medica via grant application. We did apply for that after board approval and we did receive an allocation of about eight thousand dollars. Um, so today I would just be here to ask that we accept the resolution for us to receive those monies. And wanted to give a little bit of an update on how we will be planning to use this work. Um, really excited about this. Uh, we'll be working in partnership with a nonprofit dental clinic to come out and do drop-in, um, mobile clinic services for both hygiene and restorative dental services at various locations throughout our county and six different states. Um, so pa- part of those funds will be used for that. Um, it will help cover travel and mileage for that nonprofit dental provider as well as time that they need for setup. Most of those clinic appointments that they'll have when they do those drop-in appointments will be, um, billed back to the the individual's insurance plan. So those costs are retained in that way. So with a small, a lot, a small amount of money, we're able to really, um, try to make some effort in in meeting the gap. Um, I do wanna note on the topic of dental though, that we, you know, this is not intended to be the long-term solution for our dental challenges that we're facing. So this is really to just fill the gap in the meantime. And as we'll continue to talk about, um, potentially a new dental clinic at some point in the future, this would be one of those efforts to help meet individuals, um, in community with those dental needs.
Jaclyn, these drop-ins, are they gonna be sporadic through the county or?
Yep, yep. So we, um, our community health specialists will work together to identify different locations on where they'd best be suited. Kind of looking at different opportunities of different locations, looking at data, feedback, access, all those kinds of things and determining where those spaces would be.
Great.
Um, and then on an additional note for that, um, another topic that we'll be working on is in partnership with Sherburne, Stearns, Centurure Care, um, and Hoyo Hour, which is a nonprofit support group for moms. We'll be holding three community sessions regarding measles, mumps, and rubella um, with the goal really to create education and awareness around that topic and of course, um, importance of vaccination in that space. Um, so at that time, I would just ask that we consider the resolution for us to accept those Medica funds.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that item? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Next.
All right, so, um, if you recall back to our budget meeting for public health, I had put on the backside of my handout that day that there would be a potential funding opportunity coming up that wasn't announced early enough to get it into the official packets, but that would be coming. Um, we have an opportunity through the Minnesota Department of Health, um, to apply for what's called the State Infrastructure Fund. Um, this funding is really intended to support community health board foundational health responsibilities. And Benton County Public Health staff, as you know, were a member of the Central Minnesota Alliance. So that's our regional group of, um, Benton County, Sherburne County Public Health, Stearns County Public Health, and then our Centurure Care healthcare system. Um, so what I'm here today to talk about is, um, this RFA that's now become live. Um, it's in through consensus of the Central Minnesota Alliance and talking, um, together as a group, we'd like to apply for funding in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars to support our regional community health assessment and community health improvement initiatives. This is required by us through our local Public Health Act, Minnesota Statute one forty-five A, um, for all of the public health departments across the state to complete that community health assessment and improvement plan. So as I mentioned, in working in partnership with our Central Minnesota Alliance members with Sherburne, Stearns, and Centurure Care, having the ability to complete these requirements together as a region adds a lot of support to Benton County and our capacity um, in being able to affect the health of our community. Um, one of the things I just wanna kind of get, get us thinking about in, in why we do this work regionally is thinking about, you know, how many times during the last month have you or your family, your friends, you know, across the region obtained services, you know, banking, housing, gone for food, groceries, education, um, you know? We, we know that all of these things impact health and the ability for our community to be healthy. And so we've really partnered as public health entities and healthcare entities to do this work together. Um, so really, um, you know, you heard Courtney present a little bit ago on our community health assessment that's live and all of the work that goes into that. It's a lot, um, a lot of work that goes into developing our health assessment, completing the health assessment and then analyzing the data, implementing the plan, evaluating the plan, um, all of those things collectively are, is a huge undertaking. Um, so today what I'm asking is just that, um, if we could get approval to submit a grant application, um, asking for funding in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars. And then, um, if that is awarded, I would come back to board to talk about further plans, staffing plan, that kind of thing.
Board?
Mr. Chair, Jaclyn, how, um, is this a one-time grant opportunity?
Right now, this is a one-time grant opportunity through the State Infrastructure Funds, um, and the amount of, we can request up to amount of four hundred thousand. Um, it would be a two-year cycle with the opportunity to renew at two years, so it'd be a total of four years. Um, at that point, you know, our Central Minnesota Alliance group has talked about how could we sustain this long-term? Cause we'd be looking at two regional positions. And really, we would be looking at either identifying a new grant funding source to carry it into another cycle and to carry it over, um, or using foundational public health funding between all of the agencies.
And when do you expect to have an answer on the grant?
So the application due date is on December third. And it looks like estimated start dates for projects would be April twenty twenty-five, so we would be looking around that timeframe.
Okay. Mr. Chair, it doesn't hurt to apply.
No.
No.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'll motion.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'll, I'll motion to approve applying for this four hundred thousand dollar grant.
Yep, I'll second that too.
Anything else to add to that, Jaclyn?
I was just gonna say, you know, um, just thinking about the beauty of this work with public health and the success that we've had in working in these collaborations and these relationships. And the amount of capacity that it brings back is it really does permeate into everything that we're doing here at Benton County and the ability for us to change the system. You know, you kinda think about taking a bunch of different ping pongs and throwing them in a bucket and they're all working on really important things. But in this model that we've come up with, um, with our Central Minnesota Alliance, it's kinda getting all those ping pongs to move in the same direction towards things that we know our central region needs, which ultimately impact Benton County as well. So really fortunate for these regional works, the regional work that we have across our central region and for our partners in this work as well, so.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion on this? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Updates, Jaclyn.
Yeah, I'm wondering if before we jump into updates, could I, could we do the DDA agenda item? Would that be okay?
Sure.
Okay, um, so I know recently, um, DDA had provided recommendations to the county board related on that first third of positions that were under review. And for public health, we had our case eight positions, our public health nurse position, our registered nurse position, and our community health specialist position. Um, in the final round of, uh, review, we had one appeal form that was submitted for our community health specialist position. Primarily around the idea of the career laddering or the senior position. And I'm wondering, um, and I know that the board has already voted on these recommendations, um, and has decided to move forward. But wondering if there's any opportunity for us to have further conversation about the senior position for that role? Um, and the opportunity for some career laddering for that position.
I'd almost have to refer this to Monty.
I believe, Mr. Chair, uh, the board was deferring substantially to your consultant as to when a senior position was appropriate. Uh, based upon various factors. This, this issue, of course, is a county-wide matter and I, I, it's possible that lots of other departments and positions would also like senior counterparts. I think on this question, a substantial amount of discipline is necessary. And I, I would recommend that you stay with the recommendations of your consultant and, uh, and not open that door. Um, I think Tessa has given you good justification for where a senior is appropriate and when it isn't. And I, I think we should stay with that.
So, Mr. Chair, just for clarification, Tessa saw the appeal?
Absolutely, yes, yes.
I would totally agree with Monty. I'm not willing to open that up. We're gonna do another third. And if we run down that road, we'll be opening it up to everything. Every, every position that thinks they need a step or a, you know, rate increase. So I'm not willing to go down that route.
I concur.
Okay.
Thank you for, yep, thank you for hearing my question. Um, okay, so next we'll jump into some public health updates here. All right, um, so quite a few different things going on. Um, I'm gonna kinda jump around a little bit on topics. But the first thing I wanted to talk about is, uh, potential regional dental coordinator. Uh, last week, Friday, I received a phone call from Blue Cross Blue Shield who has heard that we're starting to look at dental work, dental expansion. Um, this is primarily through the work of our community health specialists. They're involved in a lot of regional groups, um, and meeting with our health plans and community partners and working on oral health. Um, so through those conversations of our community health specialists out working with our partners, um, they had heard that, you know, we may be looking to expand that dental care in Benton County with Benton County residents and maybe in the near future. Potentially, maybe through the form of a dental clinic, um, for example. So they are reaching out, offering about seventy-five thousand dollars, um, to hire a position to work on those components. I don't have a lot of information today. I just wanted to bring it up and let you know, um, the individual contact is on vacation for the next couple of weeks. So we plan on connecting in early November, early to mid-November to have more conversation. But wanted to just get it on your radar and let you know that that conversation occurred. Um, and I could invite Gary to come and talk with the board about what could this look like, um, you know, the funding itself, um, and kind of what parameters for what type of work they could be doing. This position would be a regional coordinator position that is, um, allotted to work on ex- exploring and expanding um, challenges and issues around dental and oral health. So that's kind of the first update, um.
Wouldn't, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
When you talk about regional.
Mm-hmm.
It, would that, would that position be, you know, looking at Stearns County, Mille Lacs County?
It would be this whole central region, so similar to how we look at a lot of our work. Um, but if you recall back, we had a, a speaker come, Greg, from Wright County when we were having those conversations at our committee of the whole. He was a regional dental coordinator. And so his position really is to support in whatever way work that's happening around dental. So in this case, you know, he was really instrumental in helping get that Wright County clinic developed and the kind of coordinating and planning and holding those regional partner meetings. This would be very similar to that. Um, they would have the opportunity to work on anything that we were establishing as well as build regional capacity. So if another county had questions about how do we get something going in this space or what data do we have around dental or whatever, they can collaborate and coordinate. So it'd be a person designated to that role, that work.
Mr. Chair, whose employee, who does he work for?
Um, that, at that time, that was a Wright County, so same situation. Blue Cross Blue Shield had provided funding. They hired it and paid for that position.
So he's a Wright County employee servicing the Central Minnesota Alliance?
Yep, uh, so, well, just the central region in that capacity, yeah, yeah, yep. Now, this position would be, it would, so essentially would be Benton County would hire a person using these funds and when those funds go away, then that position would go away. But that would really be the concept of it.
And that person could help the Central Minnesota area also?
Absolutely, yep, it would be a regional work, yep. And again, going back to that, that notion that, you know, we know that our community is not just living, working, playing, and growing within our county borders. You know, we know that people are going to St. Cloud or Sherburne or Elk River, um, you know, other locations to receive healthcare and access and food and housing and funding and, you know, anything you can think of, arts and entertainment. So it goes back to that model that we know that if we align as a region, it's only creating more opportunities for people to thrive, so.
In Wright, I'm sorry, oh, oh, I am the chair. Wright. I'm a little tizzy right now. Wright County's received this funding for five, six years already?
Yeah, I think they had it for about, I don't know how many years he was there, but I know it was.
Few years, yeah.
We, at least, I'm, yeah, we've been working with him for what, three years ago, two, three years ago? So, yeah, I don't know exactly how long. Um, and. So, yeah, I don't know exactly how long. And Blue Cross is not able to guarantee how long the funding would be for either. But like I said, we would, you know, we can get him to come talk with us, have a meeting, or I can sit down and meet with him and bring more information back to the board and just hear more about what the offer is. But it's really exciting to think, it's, it's good timing because if there is going to be some movement with future plans, this would be a really timely position to get in place and be able to corral all of that work. So.
Mr. Chair, that was a good point what you brought up because I thought it was, I thought it was that $75,000 for one year. And then, because I'm like, we always talk about how government moves.
Yeah.
We're like, we get, we get, we get the contract done in the first year.
Right.
And for him to come on, and then, then we, we're already out of money.
Well, and it wouldn't be Greg specifically. It'd be somebody. But, yeah, it would be somebody. But, you know, I, with this type of funding, this is through a health plan. So it's a little bit different. It doesn't have to follow, come through our state system. So it's a little, probably a little bit quicker moving. And I think by the first of the year, we could end up getting these things in place.
I'm all in favor.
Something for us to think about. All right. Next update, cannabis funding. So we have been talking about getting our cannabis funding for a very long time since Minnesota had changed the legislature. We finally received our award amount. So it's just simply an update to let you know that we'll be expecting a contract to come related to cannabis and substance use prevention funding. This came out of the new state legislature change with the cannabis legalization. So public health will be receiving to our community health board around $106,076 to work on cannabis prevention and substance use prevention. That funding formula is coming from a recommendation from Shack, which again, is really giving us a base funding and then takes into account the social vulnerability index and then your population size and that funding amount. So we are receiving quite a bit for that cannabis work. And that will be expected to come here shortly in a contract.
Okay.
Next update, our Women, Infants, and Children program. They are going live today with a new documentation system called Winnie. And so we are thinking about our staff today because it is a massive feat. It's a whole new, kind of like if you think about like an electronic medical record or like your MyChart, your documentation system, charting, appointments, everything. So brand new system, going live. And so we're just thinking about them and hoping for a smooth implementation today. Our WIC clinic, we have two WIC certifiers who are averaging around 212 WIC appointments a month. So they're very busy and we're hoping that it goes well today as they implement this new computer system and technology.
Two twelve a month?
Two hundred and twelve, between the two of them.
Okay.
A month, yep, of WIC clinic appointments. So it's about 30 appointments a week. Yeah. Yeah, they're quite busy. Recruitment update on our public health nurse position. So we are currently recruiting for our public health nurse position who will work in with our WIC program, our family home visiting program, and then in our child and teen checkups. We'll be looking at applications on the 28th of this month. So far, we haven't found a candidate. And then the, the last one here, and then I'll flip to the next couple of slides for some updates. Our last quarter report for our family home visiting services, we have that First Steps Collaborative, which is the collaborative among the three counties, Benton, Sherburn, Stearns, and then Wright is in addition to this one. Our First Steps model had a quarterly report that was due, and we're at 100% caseload for our family home visiting nurses, which is pretty great. We've been able to stay up above the targeted metrics. We've also seen a 9.8% increase in families served over the last quarter in comparison to the previous quarter. So just update on that family home visiting model. And then a couple of other updates here. Our Central Minnesota Alliance was highlighted in the state newsletter. And so I'll pass out, as soon as I'm done here, the newsletter copy. But we were highlighted in the Local Public Health Association statewide newsletter for our work for the community health assessment in our partner meeting that we had. And so a couple of the commissioners were at that meeting. Monty has a photo debut down there in the corner, too, along with some of our community health specialists. So pretty cool to see the Central Minnesota Alliance being highlighted across the state. We also recently, Assistant Commissioner Dr. Tura visited Benton County Public Health from the state of Minnesota, had come out to talk with us just a little bit about what our local community priorities are, what collaborations exist. Talked a lot about those regional, the regional work we do in the central region as well as needs of our community. The other thing we, we talked a lot about was the need for data infrastructure as well. Dr. Tura found, found us over at Shack and was talking about, you know, just really impressed with the central region and all of the collaboration and coordination and partnerships that are happening. And then lastly, I was just going to give a little bit of an update. This is a photo here of one of our public health nurses. So recently, she has done a presentation to a senior center about human trafficking and wanted to highlight this. She's been doing this quite a bit with a lot of different partners. She's been in our school system, over doing, during teacher workshop, doing presentations on human trafficking and how to identify, promote healthy, safe relationships, look for risk factors and those sorts of things. But as well as meeting with many, many different community partners. At some point in time, we'll have her come and do a presentation to the county board. You know, why is this a public health issue when you think about human trafficking? Well, we know that 32% of victims become pregnant before age 18. We also know that over 90% have substance use disorders. And in addition, about 50% of kids regularly attend school during exploitation, but the average age for child trafficking is about around the age of 12. So it's a really important community issue. Central Minnesota has the third highest rate of human trafficking in Minnesota. And so we've been working in collaboration on this from a public health perspective as well. And that's it. So, like I said, just wanted to provide some updates. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Jaclyn? Thank you very much, Jaclyn, for the updates, too.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Very good.
Yep. With that, I'll adjourn the Benton County Community Health Board at 11:33 and turn it back over to Commissioner, Board Chair. Sorry.
Thanks, Commissioner Heiner. Monty, on your text about our meeting at 12:45, I don't think the ditch is going to go that long. I could be wrong, but.
What time is your meeting?
11:45.
I think, Chris, we could rock, rock and roll through a ditch authority meeting in 10 minutes going.
It's just an update.
Yep.
Yep. Well, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. So we'll call our ditch authority.
11:50, yeah. Five minutes.
We'll call our ditch authority meeting to order 11:33. We're all present. Is there any changes to the agenda, Chris?
I have none.
Is there an emotion?
Sure move.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda is presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried, move on to consent agenda, approve or amend the meeting minutes of October 1st, 24.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve. I'll second that. Any other discussion in regards to the minutes? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Chris, update on county ditch 14 wetlands.
All right. So as you know, we've talked a lot about those additional repair areas. The guidance was to go for a full-depth repair at the one station, 84 plus 00 to 86 plus 00, and then just do vegetation management on the other three areas. The TEP was able to meet on October 8th, and we got an application into them that same day for this work, which included withdrawal of wetlands. And so that got approved at the TEP on the October 8th. And then we also got an approved purchase agreement to withdraw those credits from a wetland bank. So I just wanted to show you, this is the actual invoice, or I should say quote. But this is what the cost is, $90,000 per credit. And we needed to purchase .48 credits to mitigate for that full-depth repair at that location, which comes to $43,200. This is why we say budget for $100,000 because with the fees, sometimes you get a little bit closer. So to less than a half an acre of wetland credit comes to $44,301.12. And so that's being drawn. Based on the approval, there's a 15-day comment period after the notice of action was published. Make a long story short, November 1st, I can have approval or we have approval on November 1st to have the contractor go out there and do this work. So.
Chris, the state fee on there of $1,000 bucks, $956.
Yeah, state withdrawal fee.
Bowser get that, or who gets that?
I think that does go to Bowser for managing the wetland banks.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I, I have a question. When we had our last meeting about vegetation removal.
Yeah.
Okay. You were saying that when we do this, we're only authorized a foot, I think it was, for the sediment to take out?
So that's what, yeah, if you read through this application for the aquatic resources and all that, that's what was approved is 12 inches of material total on those vegetation management areas. So.
So is that going to leave all of the cattails in?
No, we should be able to grab the cattails and then 12 inches below the surface.
Below the cattails?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so it could be, okay, that's, that's my, that's what I wanted to understand. Because if we pull the cattails out and it takes a foot of vegetation, are we going further down or a foot of sediment with that?
Now that you clarify, no, that's about what it is. If we, so we, on the surface, you see cattails. We grab that cattail and 12 inches of root mass and sediment comes with it. That's probably all that we'll be able to, to take. So.
Okay, so that brings my next question. We're spending a lot of money of getting sediment out of there that will not take care of all of the cattails. Because some of the cattail roots will always stay there and we'll always be doing a maintenance program on cattails.
In the channel itself.
In the channel.
So, and then we've, we've also talked a lot about on the buffer trip area, too, doing some mowing and things like that. So.
Because there's no guarantee when we do, when we do that, that it's going to take the roots out. At least the first time, we could have pulled all the roots out to begin with, right?
I don't know what the repair elevation is in those three spots where we're doing vegetative.
We can only go down a foot.
Right. But I mean, if we were to repair them, how deep would we have gone? Was it a three-foot channel that we're not opening? I don't know.
That, that is a good question, and I don't know that off the top of my head. So that was kind of the difference. It could be right there or it could have been a lot deeper. I think though, with the other three locations, though, the wetland impacts were greater.
Sure.
If we did remove that to a full depth, and that's.
I get that.
That got, that considerably a lot more expensive.
Because they were open water.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right.
I get that.
I don't think there's any way that they could go back to us and say, oh, that root ball was, you know, 15 inches.
I know.
Well, that was some of the concern about the repair at that other station of why we just did the repair. So there was no question in there.
Yep, exactly. But if we, if we take pictures of these root balls and we find out that they're, you know, it's, I, I gotta believe that. What are they going to ask us? Do cut some off, put it back in?
You never know. You don't know. You don't know.
I just wanted clarification, you know.
Okay. I just think if somebody was out there talking to the excavator, he could just go deeper and deeper, you know? And nobody's ever going to check it.
Thank you.
This is reviewed and recorded, I think. All right.
The documentation reflects that it'll be 12 inches.
So that's just an up, that's just an update because that's what we approved.
That's right. I just wanted to bring that back so everybody knows that that's the goal. That'll be, you know, that 90 or $43,000 will be, you know, part of the, or $44,000 will be part of the assessments, future assessments.
Okay.
And first week in November, we should be able to get that going.
And are we also intending to go for some quotes on maintenance on CD6?
Correct. Yes, yes, yes. So, and, and three. I plan on getting some quotes for CD6 and three.
Okay. Meeting updates, Mr. Chair.
All right. Anything else, Chris? Anything else from ditch authority?
No, I have nothing more than.
Okay, ditch authority is adjourned at 11:39. Turn it back to the.
Okay. I think what we'll do is, does Amory got any important updates on commissioner meetings?
Nope.
Nope.
I got two that, real quick, the Inoka treatment.
Oh, yeah.
The Inoka treatment, our beds went up.
Yep.
Pretty good. Yeah.
Much is pretty good.
Uh, I think about $15,000 a year.
Whoa. Per?
Per bed.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a big increase. And then ATP3 meeting, I had, the St. Cloud APO is working out getting some, Chris, you are a part of that meeting, but there's some discussion on, on, on the funding guidelines and, and, and the things that haven't been changed or the guidelines haven't been changed in like 25 or 30 years. So the APO stands to gain, which we gotta be careful because 7W is part of Benton County, too.
7W loses then a little bit.
Yeah.
Sure.
And which we're a part of both.
Right.
So there, there, we'll keep going on that. The Rays debriefing, I thought went, you know, I think how I put it on the meeting is they patted us on the back and then slapped us in the face.
Oh, one of those. Those are always nice.
But honestly, I think at the end of the deal, I think, Monty, I, Chris, I think that's, we're sitting in a good spot.
We are.
If I was a Benton man.
Yep.
And I am. I think, I want to, I think the next turn we could get.
We could, but I, at a meeting yesterday, I learned that that grant that we received to hire the consultant, put the application together, that is available again for us again. We get $30,000 per year. So I can apply again for 2025, up to $30,000.
And did we apply last year for it, too?
Yeah, and we were, it was for 2024.
Yep.
Okay.
So.
So that offset the cost.
We could, yeah. And as we talked, we don't think it should cost the same amount.
Yeah.
Yep. But I think we're close. We, we went up on three and went down on one. So I don't know that happens. But anyway, that's all I have. Okay, anybody else?
Commissioner updates or commissioner.
Uh, cows. None. Okay.
Yes, of course.
Oh, good.
You'd be so lucky. Evan is unable to attend the October 17th Government Center meeting and asked to reschedule. I want to propose to you Monday, November 5th. I know that date works for Evan. It does not work for Commissioner.
That's, that's hunting.
Monday, November 4th, you said?
I believe I said the 5th.
That's Tuesday.
Oh, excuse me. Um.
Board meeting.
Oh, Tuesday, yeah, that'll work. Hang on.
After the board meeting.
What's my emails? Yeah, that works. You know, um.
Library Insurance Meeting at.
Yeah.
1:00.
I did say, excuse me, is, I did mean the 4th. But I, if I recall correctly, Evan was pretty free that week. So.
I'd be fine after the board meeting if, if it worked. I don't know.
I can do that. I don't.
So the best date would be after.
After the board meeting on the 5th?
Upon conclusion of committee board on the 5th.
Approximately 10:30.
Yep. Well, let's try and keep it a short.
Compress, yeah, compress.
Compressor.
So 10:30, 11-ish on the 5th. Okay.
He's got it to 11 already.
Yeah, just like that. Okay. And that's all, that's all we had. Okay.
Move for approval of the cows.
We got a motion a second to set the one cow. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
One very final 30-second thing since we've got two minutes. Chris, very 30-second quick update on the fuel project highway.
It's operational again.
Okay.
So paperwork has been sent to the, the warranty people, and we're waiting to hear back from them on how much they will cover.
Great.
How much was the cow, was the repair?
Oh, we're just under $40,000 now.
Under our estimate.
Because it, they end up having to do an epoxy liner on the whole inside of the tank, which.
I care.
It's more about $7,000 more than the original quote.
Hopefully that seals her off for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever. All right. So with that, we're going to be adjourned at.